Hello all. I call the meeting to order for the May 24th special joint meeting of the City Council and Finance Committee. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Mayor Muldoon and Finance Committee member Stapleton have excused absences.
Thank you. The first presentation is the city's recognition of retired library service director, Tim Heatherton. Where's Tim? I'll read a few words about Tim and then we'll bring him up here to tell us all he wants to tell us.
Like I jumped again, I'm sorry.
No, no, we prefer you up there, it's better in the hot seat.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure to say a few words about Tim Heatherton before we present him with a plaque to commemorate his many years of service to our community. Tim was with the Newport Beach Public Library for 23 years, eight of those as the director of the library. The operations at the Central Library in addition to three branch libraries, Tim directed flawlessly, Coronel Mar, Mariners, and Balboa. During his time as library director, Tim oversaw the construction of the new Coronel Mar branch and assisted in getting the upcoming library lecture hall underway. All amazing successes and strides forward for our libraries here in Newport Beach. Under Tim's leadership, the Newport Beach Public Library was awarded four stars by the American Library Association, a rare honor among libraries, and one that distinguishes the Newport Beach Public Library as one of the bests in the state. Tim directed a staff of more than 60 employees with an operating budget of nearly $10 million while ensuring a high level of customer service. And during the pandemic, Tim provided leadership that allowed for the library to become an essential service to the community with curbside pickup, virtual events and programs, online storytime, and so much more. In addition to his role as library director, Tim has served as cultural arts liaison between the Arts Commission and the city, facilitating major arts programs and events, helping to turn concepts into realities. Tim has made a tremendous impact here in Newport Beach through the programs and services he has managed and championed, and in doing so, Tim helped to build a dedicated and hardworking library team that will continue to provide the highest level of service to our residents. Tim, on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Newport Beach, it's my honor to present you with this plaque commemorating your many years of excellence and service to this community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Tim, if you'd like to say a few words and then we can take some pictures and present the plaque.
Sure, I thank you very much, Mayor and Council, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. You know, I have to say, I've been blessed with great bosses, great colleagues on the management team. I had a great staff the whole time I was at the library, just great people to work with and great people to get the job done. A good supportive council, always support our library and our cultural arts, and then I'm really grateful for my wife Jennifer at home, all the support she provides, you know, over the course of my career and always my biggest advocate and my closest advisor. But just being a part of this city has been the greatest professional honor of my life, and I'm very grateful, and thanks very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Joy, would you like to say something?
I'd like to say something too, Tim. I got to know Tim when we were in the process of designing the new CDM library and fire station and library. And we had a community group that was very active and very passionate and knew exactly what they wanted, and Tim, you were so patient with all of us. I can't say thank you enough. I think we ended up with a really good product, but I know you had to put up with a lot from people who were not the experts that you and your staff were and that the consultants were, and you were just so patient and accommodating, and I really appreciate that. And I'm gonna miss you terribly, but enjoy yourself.
Likewise, very much. And that branch, I think, is just the gem of the system now, it's beautiful, and good job to everybody involved.
Thank you. Give me some photos, the whole council wanna go for it, I think. All right, the second presentation is a proclamation honoring the Newport Harbor High School Boys and Girls Water Polo CIF State and National Champions. I'm gonna read the proclamation and then we'll have Coach Sinclair come forward and say a few words. "On behalf of the City of Newport Beach, whereas the Newport Harbor High School Girls' Water Polo Team won the CIF Open Division Title, CIF State Regional Title, and finished ranked number one in the nation," nice, "whereas this was the sixth time the Sailors' Girls' Water Polo Team has won the premier title, which makes them the winningest program in high school girls' water polo history." Wow. "Whereas the Sailors' Girls' Water Polo Team was led by Coach Ross Sinclair and finished with a team GPA of 4.01." Wow, geez, should put my son in water polo. Now, therefore, I, Noah Blom, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the Newport Harbor High School Girls' Water Polo Team." And we're gonna do one more for the boys. "On behalf of the City of Newport Beach, a proclamation, whereas the Newport Beach High School Boys' Water Polo Team won the CIF Open Division Title, CIF State Regional Title, and finished ranked number one in the nation, whereas this was the 13th time the Sailors' Boys' Water Polo Team has won the premier title, which makes them the winningest program in high school boys' water polo history." That's 13 years, okay, that's nice, guys, 13 times, well done. "Whereas the Sailor Boys' Water Polo Team was led by Coach Ross Sinclair and finished with a team GPA of 3.7." Now therefore, I should've led with that one, huh? Now therefore, I, Noah Blom, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the Newport Harbor High School Boys' Water Polo Team." If Coach Sinclair would like to come up and say a couple of words, and any of the team that's willing to as well.
Thank you, City Council. You said it all, but the one thing is that we now have a rivalry with team GPAs, so the girls are smarter, which I'm okay with considering I'm married to my wife and I have three daughters, so obviously it's a magical year, but what you're looking at right here is not only the best students on campus, but also the best student athletes on campus and in this community. We have Newport Beach lifeguards, Valley Actoreans, and probably some future councilmen or councilwomen in this room, so thank you guys for honoring us. It's an amazing community, amazing public school in Newport Harbor, and really, really proud of these young men and women here, so thanks again. Come on up, we'll get a little picture, I'm assuming?
You know the process here, 13 years, yeah.
Okay, boys down so the council members don't have to. There we go. Parents are gonna go first, go ahead.
Look over here, one, two, three.
I'll give him a quick moment to exit. That's good, I thought we had a conversation about trees going on, so that's much better. All right, after that excitement, the last presentation is a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. I'll read the proclamation and then we'll have Olivia Siegel and Mara James, founder of the Extraordinary Lives Foundation, come forward to say a few words. "Whereas the month of May has been declared National Health Awareness Month, whereas according to the U.S. Surgeon General, mental health is fundamental to health and indispensable to personal well-being, family, and interpersonal relationships. Whereas one in five Americans will face mental health challenges in a given year, regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, or economic status. Whereas there are widespread misunderstandings and discrimination concerning mental health that can be eliminated by recognizing that mental health challenges are real, common, and treatable. Whereas the National Mental Health Awareness Month is a time for communities to acknowledge the importance of mental health and take action to ensure that individuals facing mental health challenges have the access to care, treatment, and prevention services they need. Now, therefore, I, Noah Blom, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month." If you guys would like to come up and say a few words, we would love to have you. Wonderful.
Hi. This is Piggy Bear. I'm Mara James, the founder and CEO of the Extraordinary Lives Foundation. On behalf of the organization, we'd like to say thank you for proclaiming May as National Mental Health Awareness Month. Our mission is to improve children's mental health and wellness and support families. We provide awareness, education, prevention, early intervention, and we have Piggy Barrett, which is the face for children's mental health, which encourages young children to identify and talk about their emotions, and we think that, we believe that it starts as early as three years old. So again, on behalf of the Extraordinary Lives Foundation, thank you for proclaiming May, and we hope that Piggy Bear can be in the pictures with us.
Wonderful, thank you so much for all the work you do, it's so important.
You come down? Yeah.
Thank you, on to current business. The next item is the review of the proposed fiscal year 2022-23 operating budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I'm Scott Catlett, your finance director, joined by Shelby Bruguan, the city's budget manager. Today, we're going to present to you the fiscal year 22-23 budget for the city. This budget emphasizes four key points of high-quality municipal services, safe and secure neighborhoods, keeping the city looking great, and maintaining a prosperous, fiscally sustainable, economically viable city. This year's budget also has an additional focus on continued elimination of our long-term liabilities, ensuring proper funding for our infrastructure maintenance and replacement, and addressing the council's priorities that were articulated on January 29th in the planning session. We have a robust budget review process here in the city with nine separate opportunities for public comment, including two that are today that are highlighted there. The budget prior to coming to the council today for the joint meeting with the Finance Committee has in particular been reviewed by the Finance Committee in detail in March and April at their meetings, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Shelby to give you an overview of the numbers, and I'll come back and talk about the program enhancements.
Good afternoon. Before we get into the fiscal year 23 proposed budget, first we're going to give you an update on the current year. So staff has completed the quarter three budget review and presented that information to the Finance Committee, and it will be presented to the council at the next meeting. What we are projecting after that review is a $19 million positive revenue variance compared to the adopted budget and an expected expenditure savings of $6 million, which will likely be even higher by the end of the year. So staff is expecting an $18 million budget surplus at year-end beyond the required contingency reserve, and we'll provide more details on that when we present the third quarter budget update to you. Now we'll get into the fiscal year 23 proposed budget. Here is a table showing a five-year history of adopted budgets for all funds, and you'll notice that the operating budget seems to be growing at 12.5% from the prior year, but it's important to point out that a large portion of that increase is related to the change in the Tidlands Fund presentation format. A report was reviewed and approved by the Finance Committee back in January that aligned the way that we budget for the Tidlands Fund operations with the way that our financial report presents it. This change is incorporated for the first time into the fiscal year 23 proposed budget and accounts for a sizable amount of the growth in fiscal year 23 compared to fiscal year 22. And we'll look at an adjusted table on the next slide that restates the prior years to reflect these changes for a more apples-to-apples comparison. Adjustments to the police and fire department's overtime budgets was also necessary to align with the Tidlands Fund format change. It's important to understand that this budget increase does not allow the departments to use more overtime than they currently are, it will just align the budget to actual usage within the general fund. In addition to those changes, the proposed budget also includes an increase of the CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability payment above the $35 million that's included in the fiscal year 22 adopted budget to $40 million in the fiscal year 23 proposed budget. This additional $5 million in the base budget was a concept that was explored by the council at the planning session in January, and we'll go into more detail about PERS later in this And actually, another area of growth in the operating budget is an increase in some of the internal service fund charges after a review of the internal service fund rates that was presented to the Finance Committee in February, and the capital improvement program budget has a record high for new appropriations of $70.6 million. Driving this large increase has been the additional availability of funds from both the prior year surplus as well as the American Rescue Plan Act. So this is the same table that we looked at on the previous slide, but with the change in the Tidlands Fund format restated for the prior years to give you an idea of what the actual growth in the operating budget is. When we restate fiscal year 22 with the true Tidlands costs included, you can see that the actual increase to the operating budget is 6.6%. So the items I talked about in the last slide apply to this, as well as we removed the vacancy factor that was included in the prior two adopted budgets. So for clarity throughout this presentation, other charts and tables will reflect this restated Tidlands format change. This chart shows the history of actual operating expenditures for all funds back to fiscal year 2017 and the corresponding growth rate of expenditures year over year. The general fund makes up just over 70% of the total operating budget, followed by the water fund and the Tidlands fund, and then all other funds aggregated only represent 14% of the total operating budget. This is just operating budget, so it excludes CIP. Here we can see the breakdown by major fund of the total 6.6% operating growth we looked at a few slides back. The general fund growth over fiscal year 22 is 8.1% for reasons that I already touched on, but that we will discuss in more detail later on. The wastewater fund growth is at 23.4%, largely due to two factors. Number one, there was a change in the insurance internal service fund allocation methodology. Previously, the insurance rates were erroneously undercharging the wastewater fund specifically for property insurance, so this budget and the new ISF rates correct that. And then secondly, an update to the administrative service charge calculation. Previously, the admin service charge was charging too much to the water fund and hardly anything to wastewater, so the new calculation trues that up. Here's the total adopted CIP budget over the past five years. The fiscal year 23 proposed CIP includes almost $71 million in new appropriations and $32.4 million in green budgets. The prior year surplus has contributed to the large increase in new spending, as well as the appropriation of the American Rescue Plan Act, and some notable projects include the lecture hall at the Central Library, Balboa Peninsula Fire Station and Library replacement, Phase One of the Balboa Island Drainage Improvements, and the Junior Lifeguards Building. And now we're gonna focus on the general fund, we'll spend the majority of our time on the general fund because as we saw before, it makes up over 70% of our operating budget. So this chart shows the city's general fund revenue by major category. You can see that the big three make up over 75% of general fund revenues, with property tax being the biggest source of revenues, followed by sales tax and then TOT. The other big piece of the pie here is charges for services projected at $27.9 million, which includes revenues from fees as well as permits and licenses. This chart shows the projected trajectories of general fund revenues for the city. The bright blue line represents the pre-pandemic revenue projection that was included in the long-range financial forecast, and then the yellow line represents our initial post-COVID projection when the impact on revenues was unknown. And then finally, the dark blue line represents the historical actuals, as well as our current projection for fiscal year 23, which is built into the proposed budget. So we can see here that even despite COVID and the impact that it had on our revenues, our revenues are exceeding where we thought that we would be pre-pandemic. Property tax is the city's largest single source of revenue. The city receives 17.2% of the 1% property tax, which is the third-highest share of property tax that a city has in Orange County. The chart in the lower right corner shows the growth over the past 10 years in average and median prices. You can see that over the past two years, prices have increased by over 35%, leading to a projected assessed valuation of $69 million for next year, which is the second-largest in Orange County. 84.7% of the assessed valuation in the city is residential and is a primary driver of growth. The combination of receiving a higher percentage of the total tax and having a high-valued residential real estate base is a significant factor in the city's fiscal stability. Property tax makes up almost 50% of general fund revenues, projected at $131.4 million in fiscal year 22-23, which represents a 6.4% growth over the projected 21-22 estimates. Growth is based on strong assessed valuation in sales and a return of the full 2% CPI factor. Here's the city's actual property tax revenue going back to fiscal year 2009. You can see how the consistent growth has, or how consistent the growth has been and how stable this revenue source is for the city. Sales tax is the city's second-largest source of revenue. The city receives 1% of the 7.75% sales tax. The city is fortunate to have a healthy base of auto and transportation dealers, restaurants and hotels, as well as general consumer goods retailers. 17 of the top 25 sales tax producers are either auto dealers or fashion island retailers. Total sales tax revenues for fiscal year 23 are projected at $46.5 million, which represents a 2.5% growth over the current year-end projection. The projected growth in the current year is estimated at 16.5%, with auto sales remaining strong and restaurants and hotels, as well as brick-and-mortar retail establishments exceeding pre-pandemic levels. With growth in the current year being so strong, staff is being conservative in our estimates for fiscal year 22-23, projecting to see growth slow down a bit. This is the history of actual sales tax revenue since fiscal year 2009. You can see that sales tax has been consistently growing, but it is more volatile than property Transient occupancy tax is the city's third-largest source of revenue. The city has a 10% tax rate, which is typical of many California jurisdictions. We get TOT from both hotels as well as residential short-term rentals. As a result of the pandemic, the city made some improvements to the methodology of projecting TOT revenues, and we use data from both Visit Newport Beach and Visit California to help inform our estimates. For fiscal year 22-23, we're projecting TOT at $27.8 million, which exceeds pre-pandemic levels and represents a 4.6% growth rate over our current baseline projection. The below chart shows 8.7% because staff lowered the current year projections by $1 million due to uncertainty in the timing of a full recovery, as well as the VEA opening. If we take that into account, the actual growth is only 4.6%. Hotel-related TOT revenues are still trailing our pre-pandemic levels by 8.6%. However, if we exclude VEA and the Pendry from our prior year numbers, we're actually up 13.7% versus 2019. Additionally, occupancy rates are 25% below 2019 levels but are offset by higher room rates, which are up 12% in the current year alone. Residential TOT is more than offsetting the lag in hotel TOT revenues with an 86.4% growth rate over the past three years. This chart shows the history of actual TOT revenues going back to fiscal year 2009, and here you can see how much the pandemic impacted this revenue source, but that it has rebounded almost entirely in the current year. Now we'll get into the general fund expenses. The general fund makes up about 70% of the total operating budget. That 70% is further broken down here by category, so personnel costs are the largest expense to the city at $163 million for fiscal year 23, followed by general maintenance and operations at just under $80 million. Transfers for fiscal year 23 represent 10.8% of the budget, and there's a slide later on that details each of the transfers that makes up the $29.6 million. This chart shows the history of the adopted general fund operating budget since fiscal year 2017 and the corresponding growth rates year over year. So we went over the large contributors to the 8.1% growth, sorry, over the current adopted budget, but if it still seems larger than normal, keep in mind that the past two adopted budgets were developed with a lot of uncertainty related to the pandemic, and the city exercised some budget reduction strategies in response to an anticipated decline in revenues. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Scott to talk about some of the other things in this budget.
So I'm gonna focus on some of the changes between last year's expenditure budget and this year, and specifically the program enhancements that are being proposed for the council's consideration. One thing I wanted to focus on initially is work we've been doing with the Finance Committee for the last few months, looking at a number of things that are listed on the screen here, our internal service charges, the amount of funds that we transfer out to our savings programs like the FFP and the FMMP, looking at the adequacy of our budgets for things like utilities for water and electric expenses, and also looking at accounts that maybe were not captured in our process for being adjusted for inflation. One good example of that would be the library books account, which the library brought to our attention, which had been flat for several years because we don't capture that in our inflation adjustments. So that's proposed for an enhancement this year, and we've now changed our process to look at accounts like that that weren't in the account, in the process previously. So this is just to highlight for you that some of the growth you're seeing is based on right-sizing the budget for these things that we've identified, and the material ones we've reviewed with the Finance Committee and received their concurrence. So Shelby mentioned the 8.1% growth, and I thought it was important to provide some context for that, so this slide really breaks that down into categories of growth, and you'll see a subtotal. So what's above that subtotal line is what I would call the real growth in the baseline budget. This is the program enhancements that we'll be talking about a little bit later in my presentation, which is the first two lines. presentation, which is the first two lines. Then the third line is sort of all of the other things that routinely go on in the project, CPI adjustments to our contracts with outside vendors, COLIS for our staff, those sorts of things. So the things below the line are what I would consider is atypical this year. The first one, and I'll talk about pension in a few slides, is growing that UAL payment for the city. So that's about a quarter of that 8% proposed growth rate, $4.8 million, which is the general fund share of the $5 million proposed increase. Shelby also mentioned that Tidelands adjustment. Some of that is in transfers, some of it is in police and fire and the way we track over time, so that's in there. Higher internal service charges to make sure we're properly saving for our internal services. That's the third item. Removing the vacancy factor. The council will recall that for the last two years, we had a $2 million vacancy factor in the budget, which was an assumed staff vacancy rate, and at some points, we were actually holding back on recruitments during the pandemic. So this is being removed now. Finance Committee concurred with that recommendation, and so now we're moving to 100% budgeting for our staffing costs. And then lastly, we look comprehensively at our utilities budgets, and we identified that some of those were not keeping pace with the rate increases that's coming from the outside utility providers, so we've now trued all of those up to the amount of money that the departments need. So all of that added together is the other 6% of the growth, and that makes 8.1. So I mentioned the pension strategy, and when we talked last year with the council, the Finance Committee's most recent recommendation had been to be at $35 million and then to make a $5 million contribution from year-end surplus. Given that the city has had great revenue news this past year and in the year ahead we're projecting, we're recommending that we increase that baseline budgeted contribution to $40 million, which will further accelerate the elimination of the liability. We would still, based on Council Policy F5, then make a year-end contribution of at least $5 million. So that would push, versus the current year and last year, the $40 million total contribution up to $45 million. And you can see here the effect that that would have. I have to caution, this is based on last year's June 30 numbers. Obviously, the markets have been a little volatile in the last year, so we would expect if things don't improve dramatically in the next 30 days, CalPERS is going to have a bad year, and so that may push the line out a bit. But as you can see with the four lines here, it moves out, it moves closer, but certainly sometime in the range of the next six to 10 years, with this strategy in place, we will see the elimination of the city's liability. And adding this additional $5 million will only serve to make that happen sooner. Terms of expenditures by department, there's a lot of detail here. I won't go into it, except to say that highlighted on the left are the reasons for any material variances, in case anyone had any questions, and I can certainly come back to this later if there are questions. But there are explanations for each department why they have an increase that's more than a couple of percentage points or a decrease that are related to the listed items. In terms of general fund transfers, I wanted to just highlight briefly one of the important topics we've been talking about with the Finance Committee, and that's ensuring that we have adequate savings set aside for the Harbor and Beaches Master Plan, the Facilities Finance Plan, and Facility Maintenance. Good news is, is that our analysis determined that, yes, we've been saving adequately for those programs, only recommended minor adjustments. One notable adjustment, though, is for the Facility Maintenance Plan. We're recommending an increase from $1.5 million to $2.5 million a year, which is sizable, but that will be money that Public Works can then put into play for ensuring that all of our facilities are kept up at the standard that our residents expect. And so that will be a significant additional amount of resources they can then employ for those smaller capital improvements like carpet replacements, refreshes of interiors of buildings, those sorts of things. So in terms of what the end result of this budget will be, and then I'll turn to the program enhancements as the last piece of my presentation. You can see here in the chart that at the bottom of the current year, we would be projecting $14.4 million, and Shelby mentioned $17 million earlier. The difference is that we have to add in that bottom red box $3.5 million to the contingency reserve, because as our general fund budget grows, that reserve has to grow. And so that has to be taken out of that surplus for the current year. That leaves us with $14 million. And then in the new year, we would project with the additional $8 million of surplus that we're projecting, we would have $22 million in total on hand for the council's use. Also want to point out, in the upper two red boxes, again, trying to decrease the complexity of our budget, we've moved some restricted revenues out of the general fund into their own separate funds, which eliminates some of those extra lines up there. Essentially, that's to zero, but those will be gone in future years, so we'll just be looking at revenues and transfers, expenditures and transfers, makes that a little bit more straightforward. Another thing I want to point out that's notable is that that $7.8 million is what we call a structural surplus. And by that, I mean those are resources that will continue in future years. So that's not a year-end surplus like we're used to. This is actually money that we haven't appropriated yet. And so the Finance Committee took a look at that with the budget at their previous meeting, and you'll see here on the screen their thoughts on that. So the recommendation from staff and the Finance Committee concurred was that we would utilize that projected year-end surplus for going ahead and making that $5 million CalPERS payment, so we can just take that off the top and say, we're now at $45 million for next year. Then, as I believe Mr. Webb mentioned in his CIP presentation when he was before you a few months ago, we're doing a planning study on recreation facilities and intending next year to set up a savings plan for those facilities, and so the thought here would be to go ahead and put a seed starting balance in a new bucket within the FFP for those recreation facilities, so there's some starting funds there of $1 million. Then the balance of $1.5 million, we would set aside for next year's CIP, just as we did last year's surplus. And then you'll see at the bottom bullet, the recommendation would be the $14 million projection for the current year, which we'll come back to you with when the books are closed in September. The thought would be, we've already taken care of that pension contribution, brought that up to $45 million, so we can set those funds aside for CIP as well. So we would have a second year in a row with a sizable cash infusion to the CIP, which would allow more projects to move forward using cash. So I'll close with talking about the program enhancements that staff's proposing in the budget. Most of these will be familiar from the council's planning session, so I won't spend much time on the ones that will be familiar. We're recommending the Police Department's inclusion of a body worn camera program and a TASER replacement program in their Internal Service Fund that they save money for for these things. That's a net general fund impact of $288,000. Also proposing the addition of one additional position to manage the back office portion of that, the video archiving and management that goes along with that camera system. $1 million for the Be Well OC program, which the council did appropriate funds this year for that, but that was a mid-year item, so we have to now add it to the base budget, and so that's a program enhancement to put that in in future years in perpetuity. We're recommending several significant capital purchases. The Fire Department would be putting in a new station alerting system for all their stations. That's a system that notifies them of calls. $379,000 to complete their vehicle ventilation system, the system they hook up to the fire trucks to get the fumes out of the bays in the station. Some of them already have that. This would be to complete the rest of the stations. And then $251,000 for Public Works to purchase some additional equipment to help them with sand management, so they can respond to requests to move the sand around at the beach a little bit faster. Down at the bottom, some other material additional requests, some one-time funding for community development to keep up with planning studies and make sure that our service levels are top-notch to the folks coming to our counter. $189,000 to purchase some additional vehicles. We have some people that are using surplus vehicles, which are vehicles that ordinarily would have been removed from the fleet, because we have some staff that might exceed the number of baseline vehicles in the department, so this would be to add some vehicles. It's a one-time expense, and in the future, they'd get replaced out of one of our Internal Service Funds. $100,000 in the wastewater fund to do a rate study. The rates there, it's a five-year plan, will be ending, and so this is to do the next phase of their rate study. I mentioned library materials, $50,000 for that. And then for the Harbor Department, $25,000 to get some enhanced lifesaving equipment for their boats. One thing that we looked at as part of our review this year is the part-time staffing in the city, and there have been some identified recruitment and retention challenges relative to certain part-time positions in the city. And it's significant to note that the majority of the part-time positions shown on the screen here are already members of CalPERS. So what we're really saving by having those folks be part-time is their full health insurance allocation, but the overall cost in terms of salary and the rest of the benefits is the same. So the recommendation that staff has before you would be to convert the seven positions listed here into full-time staff, and you'll see under the FTE change column, most of them say none. What that means is that we're already budgeting a full-time position, it's just being paid at the part-time hourly rate, so there would be no change in the number of hours those employees are working. You'll see in community development, there's one negative. That's where they would be converting to part-time positions that are .75 into a single full-time person. They've seen enough turnover where they think that would be a more effective use of their budget. There's two positions that have small incremental increases to move them up to a 1.0, but the net effect is a decrease of .2 in our FTE count and about $150,000 of ongoing annual cost. And, you know, based on turnover data we've looked at, we feel like this will ensure that these positions are filled for a longer amount of time, there'll be reduced training required, be a better bang-for-your-buck, if you will, for the city in terms of getting tenured staff. Terms of other staffing, last year, we had a contract conversion, and you'll see here again, we've evaluated where it might be cheaper to have a city staff member than to continue to pay consultants. So in Public Works, we're recommending $129,000 for an additional staff inspector. That comes with an offsetting savings. We're recommending further conversions of the outside contractors that do maintenance activities to part-time staff, so we can use folks that work for the city to do that. And then in Recreation and Senior Services, recommending having a facility maintenance worker on staff that can do some of their maintenance activities in-house and respond more quickly to those calls for service. In terms of new positions, we always try to minimize any new positions that are recommended, but we have some targeted recommendations here. The first one I already mentioned was in the Police Department. In addition to that, based on the large amount of CIP projects that have been done in recent years and are going to be continuing for the foreseeable future, Public Works is requesting one additional associate civil engineer and then some additional part-time hours. And then lastly, we have the Management Fellow position, which the council approved mid-year, but again, that has to carry over into the recurring budget, and so that's proposed for inclusion. And then lastly, there's some minor reclassifications with minimal fiscal impact, and those will be detailed in one of the attachments to our report to you on June 14. So this is a summary of the position changes that I went through there. Overall, it's a change of 11 full-time positions, but similarly to the budget growth, I've broken this up into two lines. So the top line with the subtotal, those are really the new, what I would call additions to the city's population of employees. So one for the Management Fellow, and then two for those two new requested positions in Public Works and Police. The remainder down at the bottom would be those that are being realigned, so the net decrease of .2 for the realignment program, and then the contract conversions of 3.47. So again, that's converting folks that work for contractors that are out working in the city for folks that would now be working directly for us. Total, then, net increase of 6.87 overall FTEs. And this is a tiny chart, but I know we include it every year, so I wanted to include it this year. Last year, the council had asked that we break out the non-general fund departments, so we've done that now, so you can see that non-general fund component of our position count, but bottom line again is that 6.87 position changes. And there are some other adjustments in here that are part of those minor reclassifications and moves, people are moving between departments and funds, but overall, it's the 6.87 that I talked about. So in summary, staff is recommending $4.2 million of program enhancements, with 4.1 of that being in the general fund, which would address your priorities articulated back in January, would ensure we're maintaining good service levels for the public, make sure that we have budgeting accuracy for the reasons that I talked about, and making the personnel adjustments that I just went through. So with that, the message this year is that we have a strong budget surplus for the year that we're wrapping up next month. We have record general fund revenues for next year. We're being cautious because we know that the economy is a bit unstable, but based on the information that we have now from all of our consultants and the signs we're seeing, revenue is going to grow at a record level next year. The budget's balanced with increased accuracy. We've evaluated all of our long-term savings plans with the Finance Committee this year, and importantly, we're seeing an increase in our UAL payment to a record level of $45 million. And with that, still $8 million remaining for the council to consider utilizing at year end, or today if they should so choose. And with that, we're available for your questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. Rom. First of all, congratulations, well done, and to the Finance Committee, just a couple of questions. Project, I think it's excellent what the additional reserves and prepayment on our unfunded pension liability. Going forward, I know we will not get any data from CalPERS for this year for another 18 months or something, so, but yet, doing projection planning, worst-case scenario-type financial planning, and we are paying as if the discount, we are reserving as if the discount rate is being reduced even further, which is likely to happen. Have you projected that out in terms of our satisfying our unfunded liability in five or six years, or now seven years, is that it? Six years?
So it's about six years, based on the current projection. That's actually a roll forward, so the numbers I presented are a roll forward to June 30, 2021, so CalPERS data for 6/30/21 we'll get in a few months.
So just, where do you think, what kind of hit do you think all cities will get, not just the city of Newport Beach?
You know, it's tough to tell because CalPERS, even with their investment returns, they only report on a quarterly basis and after the fact, so I don't believe, last time I checked, they'd released the March 31 data yet. The last I've seen is December 31, and at that point, they were still up for the year. Obviously, lots have transpired in the last four and a half months. So I would say, based on what I know, that that range of six to 10 years is reasonable, and so depending on whether the market improves in the next month or deteriorates, that'll obviously dictate. Now, one important thing to know, too, is that CalPERS invested a lot of things besides the stock market. They have real estate, they have some stable, you know, some bonds, other things in the portfolio, so generally, their losses should be a little bit less than the market as a whole, assuming real estate doesn't have a problem, but it's really too early to tell.
Well, it's just from a planning, a project, you know, three-year projection of where we are going to be because we're getting so close. One thing I did want to mention, where was it? In this, I think it's the City Attorney's budget. I wanted to compliment the City Attorney, if I'm hearing all the departments, the City Attorney's spending has gone down, I mean, you were spending under budget, in other words. Is that correct?
Well, I think the reduction, there's about a 13% reduction off the top of my head. The main reason for that is when we were talking about the budgeting accuracy item, we reviewed all of our internal service funds, and so we felt it was better to budget for outside council costs in a centralized location rather than several. So we've moved the City Attorney's outside council budget from the general fund to one of our internal service funds, and so the money's still there, but it's not in the general.
All right, I take it all back. But anyway, well done. The City Attorney does manage his spending very well, and I think that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, so this is a very different budget than we've looked at over the last couple of years, and so real quick, over the last couple of years, it's been incredibly difficult to work through this, so to our members of the Finance Committee, I want to say thank you for all of the effort that you've made in order to get us to this point. Grace and Scott, thank you for everything that you're doing. Scott, to your entire department. This is just not, I mean, it's tough to believe that we're here, two years later, talking about a budget like this, and so, you know, two years ago, we were trying to figure out how to cut $20 million out of the budget, and that was obviously much more difficult than trying to figure out how to spend the money. But that said, this is one of those times where we're looking out and just kind of, it's a little bit unclear where we head over the next 12 months, and so maintaining a fairly conservative approach on this by using the anticipated surplus of the current budget in order to pay down the unfunded pension liability while also setting aside money for additional CIP budgets, including, you know, for parks that we anticipate needing, as well as the drainage project that we know is going to be needed, is really helpful. And then if for some reason that does not materialize because of economic circumstances, knowing that we will almost certainly have the backfill of the anticipated last year surplus that we'll be able to look at in the fall is helpful. So, anyway, Finance Committee's been looking at this for months, and so I don't have a lot that I haven't said already at the Finance Committee level, but I just, again, wanted to say thank you because I just didn't anticipate this, that we'd actually be at a point where we'd actually be able to save money, not only, you know, get our services back up and running to 100%, but also be able to save money for future expenses that will be badly needed. So, anyway, thank you again.
Councilmember Avery?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to concur with Councilmember O'Neil. Just the getting, being that far down and coming back this strong is really something, and I think it's very tempting to, when we have this kind of budget, to spend more than we should still, and so I, as a member of the Finance Committee... And so I, as a member of the Finance Committee, I'm just really happy to see that we really held the line in a lot of places. And one of those places was, you know, hiring new employees, which, you know, we can all use. And it's just, that line is really important, but we still took some of that and without great, great cost, really, went back into community development, Public Works, planning, those areas where the public is being served, you know, every day, and they're critical areas. So it's, it shows that we had the flexibility to look at those positions, look at those things, and make calculated and very restrained decisions about where to add folks. Because if you look at our line over the years, we've been very consistent. It drops suddenly, you know, four, six, seven years ago, with the new council, we dropped over 100 employees and have stayed at that level. And that's really important, especially in my view, given, again, we don't know what's going on in the future, and it's important, that's a cost that just keeps going on and on. And we want to not have to let anybody go. If we can help it, if there's a bit of a downturn, we want to keep going with the folks we have, because it costs so much to invest in new employees. And it's, it's a good reflection of, I think, this budget in its entirety is that discipline. Thank you.
Councilmember Dixon?
Thank you. I forgot I had one more question. Scott, on one of the charts you were talking about, there was, we had been reserving for 100%, and then you're taking that away, or just explain the net effect of what you're doing.
I think you're talking about the staffing vacancy factor?
Yes, yes.
So as one of the budget balancing measures during COVID, we inserted a negative $2 million in the Personnel Budget. So that's basically presupposing that at the end of the year, $2 million of the surplus is going to come from Personnel. And by doing that, we reduce our year-end surplus and our budgetary flexibility. So we're putting that back now.
So going forward, I mean, are we budgeting for 100% employment? Because that's probably, that's going to contribute to the surplus going forward.
That's right. And that's been the city's practice historically until COVID, that we've always done that.
So we are no longer going to do that?
We're now back to our historical practice.
Okay. I just, just in summary, I just want to give kudos to Staff and to the Committee for managing our financial resources. And just a reminder to the community that the stability of our property tax revenues, which is 50% of our total General Fund revenues, and the sales tax, and the TOT, we are so fortunate as a community that we have this solid diversity of revenue sources that are consistent. A little dip here and there with economic challenges with the sales tax and TOT, but we are so fortunate that all the improvements that private entities, residential business make to their structure with the city, we'll hear about the capital improvement program, but the city is proposing to keep our infrastructure and our city looking beautiful. It all is a mutual support process that keeps property tax, property valuations increasing steadily, and then the tax revenues steadily increasing. We are very fortunate, considering what a lot of cities, absent ARPA money, what a lot of cities typically have gone through, just meeting the demands of the, their pension obligations, and they've had to make serious cutbacks. We're very fortunate. So thank you for managing the money so well, the taxpayers' money so well. Well done. Thank you.
Any comments, questions from the Finance Committee members that are here? Wow, that's great. Bill, I was, I was strictly looking at you, actually, at that point, but.
I would care, but I have nothing to say.
Well, then, let's, let's go out to the public for public comments on this item.
Mayor Protem Blom and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I see the slide that's up on the screen is numbered 48, so that was quite a lot of information that went by quite quickly for the public who is not intimately familiar with this to try to absorb. That part, I'm sure, will be archived by the city clerk, so it can be reviewed. And I realize that the budget book that this is describing is available online, and I don't anticipate it will ever become a New York Times bestseller, and I'm not sure how many people will ever read it, but I'm wondering, was it not the city's practice in the past to actually provide a copy of the proposed budget book in the city's libraries so that the public, who, the few who might be interested, could actually look at the hard copy that you're looking at and have a chance to review that during what looks like three weeks between this study session and when you'll be actually asked to adopt it? As of an hour and a half ago, the Central Library was not able to locate a copy of the proposed budget, and they probably did not receive one. So I'm, I'm wondering if we should resurrect that custom. As few people as it serves, it does seem in the interest of transparency to have copies available for the public as well as you to review. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments from the public? Okay, because it's not trees or benches? Got it. Okay, we're, just budgets, okay. We're, we'll bring it back up to the dais for any other, any other comments up here? Councilmember Brenner?
I'd be interested in knowing about Jim's comment. I do remember us, in the past, we've done that. Is it just misplaced, or?
I think it's just misplaced. We'll make sure that they're, they're there, yeah.
Okay.
Not to have a hard copies available.
Great, thank you.
Wonderful. I just, I also want to say, kudos to Staff especially. Our Finance Department is out of control, you guys. I, when I first started on this committee, I thought this would be my favorite committee, solving the world's problems when it comes to civics and finance and how they're related. And I realized, wow, we're really, really good at this right now in the city. And so it's been a great experience, beautiful education, but we have a great team, whether it's our citizen leadership, or members up here, or really, it's city staff that comes in with probably the world's best PowerPoints. Really well done, and thank you. Explained for the rest of us, and I think we greatly appreciate it and the job that we've done. And I think we're all very impressed with where we get to be right now. Councilmember Duffield?
Thank you. I can't help it. I have to say, thank you to my finance partner. I put on there, eight years he's been doing this, and I think he looked at me at first and went, yeah, I'll do it for a few months, or a year, or something. But I know he's quite involved in it all, so, but Bill, thank you, man. It's, we don't pay you a nickel, and you work your heart off how, out to get this stuff done, and I really appreciate it. And I think he was even asking me how he could maybe stay on after I'm out of here. That was a shock, but I just have to say, we really were lucky to have you, man, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Wonderful. Not just Bill, thank you, Duffield. Now's the time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Good afternoon, Nancy Gardner. I'd like to talk briefly about why I am opposed to Measure B, at least some of the reasons. Under our current charter, we have not only prospered, but we have had an amazingly scandal-free history. And I think that's, at least partly, because there are built-in checks and balances. We have a council of seven people of equal stature. This means that if something's got, gets to be done, you have to convince at least three other people, so we don't have one person just tilting the city in any one direction. That means we get the diversity of interests and opinions in our city nicely expressed. So the council sets the policy, the city manager implements it. And here's another benefit of our current system, because if we are unhappy with the implementation, the city manager can be replaced. Now, if Measure B should pass, this will change dramatically. Instead of seven peers, we will have one powerful mayor and a rather neutered city council. This new mayor would have new powers over the agenda, which is policy, and new power with staff, which is implementation. And if we are unhappy with the direction this person's taking the city, our hands are pretty much tied, because those powers are now in the charter. Short of a recall or another charter change, all of which take time and money, we're stuck. And, and further concern is that giving one person a great deal of power is opening a door to temptation. Lord Acton said it very well, you know, about power. And we have seen it. Well before the Anaheim mayor had allegations of corruption, we saw him very high-handed, trying to limit discussion both from the public and council members. And that's not the kind of representative government we want. So we have done very well under our system. It has protected us. And why open the door to something that may bring negative possibilities? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Wonderful. I wanted to thank the Finance Committee members for attending today's joint meeting, and we're going to adjourn this one and roll directly into the next one. I call the meeting to order for the May 24th study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Mayor Muldoon has an excused absence.
Wonderful. We're going on to Study Session 1 here. Going on to current business. For the first item is clarification of items on the content calendar. Councilmember O'Neill, do you need clarification? Do you have any items that you have to recuse yourself of?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Duffield? Councilmember Dixon?
I have none.
Councilmember Brenner?
None.
And Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
And I, I have some regarding the CIP, but we're doing that, that's for the later one. Perfect. And I have none as well on this item. All right. Next item, we have a review of the proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 Capital Improvement Program budget. Before we begin this item, I will ask council members and city staff to announce conflicts related to the capital improvement program during the discussion of this item. If anyone wishes to discuss a project where a council member or city staff has a conflict, the council member or city staff member with the conflict will leave the room for the discussion. We run through it. Mr. Harp, do you have any conflicts to announce related to the capital improvement program?
I do. I have a conflict regarding the Newport Coast pickleball courts, based on real property interests.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Nope.
Councilmember Duffield? What? Councilmember Dixon? Councilmember Brenner?
I have a conflict regarding the storm drain system repair rehabilitation.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery?
Aaron, I don't have any, do I? Thanks.
And for myself, I have a conflict regarding the Assessment District 22 and 111 due to real property interests. I have a conflict regarding the Balboa Island Drainage Improvements due to real property interests, and I have a conflict with the Balboa Island Micro Transit Feasibility Study due to real business interests. Thank you. Now's the time for public comments on, oh, no, we're going to a study session now? Perfect. Thanks. Take it away.
Great. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Protem Blom and council members. My name's Dave Webb, your Director of Public Works. Today, too, Jim Hulhan, my Deputy Director and your City Engineer is with us to go through your capital improvement program. As we come into May here, we get to the culmination of our capital improvement program. You've seen a lot of this before. We started back at your planning session, you recall, in January, and we had an early look in March. And with that, we've gotten a lot of input from the public, direction from council, particularly to how to use and apply various, like ARPA funds and neighborhood enhancement funds. So what we're going to show you tonight is all those pieces put together, and now you've got a printed document, which you should have and the public has, that shows kind of the draft. We're looking for one more set of comments or direction, review, or input before we go into the finalization of this document. So at this point, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Jim, and he can go through the various categories. We could probably take questions by category from you. As you recall, there's facilities and streets and things like that. And at the end, Mayor Protem, however you want to do it, we can take questions or go to public comment, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Dave.
Jim?
All right. Good afternoon. All right, we'll start with, again, the layout of the capital improvement program. You know, it sets the priorities for the appropriating funds, provides the basis for project planning and potential conflicts, develops and constructs identified public improvements, addresses significant maintenance projects, and responds to the changing priorities and conditions. So a recap of last year, we completed and will complete by June 30th, 28 projects, total value of $40 million. And listed below are seven additional projects that are wrapping up, which is an additional $18 million, so total of $58 million completing by the summer. These are the list of the projects. Of note, some of them, wrapping up right now is the Balboa Boulevard median improvement down at 12th to Medina. The Pier and Channel Place Parks were rehabbed, and those are wrapping up as well. Cliff Drive Clubhouse, we rehabbed that, and now it's available for programming by the Rec Department. The Dover Shores Traffic Calming was a collaboration with the neighbors there, was well-received. The East Coast Highway Payment Rehab, that, too, is wrapping up with the last items, striping and raising some manholes. Fire Station Number 2 will have, next, the 28th, will have ribbon cutting. And then on the other side, the Slurry Program that we did this year was one of the tougher ones. It's the Balboa Peninsula and West Newport area. That was a real challenge, but we were able to get through that one. And then the last item, the Vialito Sut and Nord Pavement, another successful project, really important, and we were able to complete that on time as well. Coming forward, the proposed CIP, we have 77 items. Those are projects, programs, and capital expenses, and that totals $102.9 million. Of that, $70.6 million is new funding, and we've talked earlier about the surplus being added to that, is included in that number, as well as the ARPA number. $32.3 being the rebudget, and below, those seven projects make up about 70% of that 32 percent, or 32 million. The proposed CIP is a commitment by city council for the continued investment in public infrastructure, and that includes rehabilitation of the aging infrastructure assets, improving all forms of transportation, significant investment in the street rehabilitation. Specifically this year, we've got quite a few projects on street rehabilitation, improving our parks and recreation facilities, and undergrounding the overhead. We're, right now, over, we're undergrounding overhead utilities in two areas of the city, and with two more approved to move forward in the next few years. And then lastly, manage and improve the harbor and Thailand's amenities. So moving into the list of the CIPs by category, we'll start with the facilities, and the proposed budget on that is $31.5 million. And I'll just touch on a few of these and give a little background of what's going on. The Central Library Lecture Hall, it's in design, it's wrapping up by the end of summer, and we're proposing to start construction in, beginning of next year, 2023. The Junior Lifeguard Building, we'll be going out to bid in the next few weeks for construction, and we're scheduled to break ground right after Labor Day. The Balboa Library Fire Station Number 1 replacement will be starting with the design this summer, and the construction is slated for two to three years out. It's 2025 right now in our FFP, fiscal year 2025. The 15th Street Restroom Replacement will The 15th Street restroom replacement will also be designed this coming fiscal year with permitting, likely the construction will begin in the fall of 2024.
And the Mayor Protem, did you want to take questions by category, or do you want to go through the whole area?
Councilmember Dixon has a question. We'll go through a few.
A comment. I just want to make a comment on the total budget of $31.5 million, thanks to the excellent public-private partnerships that we have in the city on the Central Library Lecture Hall, Junior Lifeguard, and there was one other one that the public, so really, the, so I guess my question is, of the 31, does that include the private contributions?
Yes, it does.
So, and that was total, what, four and six, maybe 10 million of that 31 million?
Yeah. Approximately. Actually, the, the 6.5 for the Library Lecture Hall and 1.75 for the Junior Lifeguard.
Only 1.7?
Yeah. 1.75. It was one and a half, they upped it, or no.
I thought it was a total of four.
Not, oh, the total project is.
Yeah, yeah. But out of this, I got it.
Yes, there, the, the commitment from the, from the foundation is the 1.75.
Right. But this is just in this current proposed budget is what we're talking about.
That's right.
But there's additional funds for a total that's, I guess, payable over two years. Is that right? Of the 4 million?
They'd be paid with the project, but I think to the bottom line is that is included in 31.5, that about $10 million in contributions is included.
And that comes from ARPA as well. So there's ARPA funds and then public, and then the, from private contribution.
There's about $10 million in ARPA funds who are programmed into those two projects, which is the city's match to the contributions.
Right. So I just wanted to emphasize that appreciation that we have for the concept of public-private partnerships and the community subsidizing about 50% of the total cost of these structures, facilities. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yeah, two projects. On the City Yard fueling support facilities rehab, a week or two ago, sorry, it's all kind of blurry, and we had gone over there to take a look at it. And so when we're looking at a cost of around $7 million, at least in the CIP, that's, that's kind of just a, that's a rough estimate because, right now at least, because we're not really sure what we're exactly going to do over there. I just want to make sure I understood that correctly.
That's correct.
Yeah. And then this is more of a Grace question. Grace, on Fire Station Two replacement, I know it's not up here, but it's in the facilities section of the CIP. The, the amount that we're paying annually is the debt repayment. And I was kind of trying to remember when, when we contribute the money from the general, it's, sorry, it's on page 14. When we're, this is just a, this is a financing question. So when we're dealing with the, when, when we're transferring money from the general plan over the facilities financing plan, typically that's been to basically cover the cost of the Civic Center debt. Are we now including the transfer from general fund over to facilities financing plan? Where's Scott? Are we, are we including the, both the Civic Center debt now and also the debt on the fire station when we're making those transfers?
Yeah, that, that's correct. And if you recall, we, we kind of reset that contribution amount for transfer from the general fund to make sure we had the baseline that we at least covered the, the both of the debt.
Yeah. Okay. That's it. All right. Yeah, thanks. I, I couldn't completely recall, so that's why I wanted to make sure I, I had asked that. Okay. Thank you.
And just to follow up, Mr. O'Neill, that $1 million you see in the budget under Fire Station Two, because that project's right on the line, it's right at the budget, or you're carrying some money over, I don't anticipate we're going to use much of that. That'll fall back in the general fund, the FFP, once the project's closed.
All right, give me a second, I need to. So does that mean that we, we borrowed more than we needed for the construction effort?
No, it means the project's fully funded, and we encumbered the money for the construction, but there's contingency and other costs that sometimes linger after the project. So we programmed just to be safe, so we had money. But if it all goes well, and we don't have a lot of contingent expenses, a lot of this will just be returned. That's part of the budget.
Okay. So the $1 million is in addition to the loaned, or the, the amount that we had taken out previously, but it's part of a contingency that we didn't really anticipate.
Yeah, it's not directly connected to the loan, it's more in the budgeting, the construction side of it. But again, it's just because the project falls right in the budget year, we need to make sure we have enough money should we need it for change orders and other things that come in July. And if we don't get a lot of that, which you'd anticipate, the money will be returned to the FFP.
All right, I'll tell you what. Instead of doing this on the fly, this is a Grace and Scott question. Could we true up the amount that we borrowed versus the amount that ends up actually getting expended? So I'd like to have a, make sure I understand. I recognize the borrowing is speculative a little bit on the amount that we need, but I just want to make sure I understand how much we actually borrowed, and then how much the project ended up costing, and whether we came out of pocket or we ended up borrowing more than we needed. That's all I want to know. Thanks.
Councilmember Avery.
Just a clarification. So the, the 15th Street restroom project is, starts in '24?
Construction. So we got to, we got to, we're going to start design this fall, and then permitting's going to be, it'll take a while.
Right. Yeah, for some reason, I thought we were a little ahead of that.
And recall, this is in the FFP, but because it's on the beach, it'll take a lot more permitting through coastal and community involvement, so we anticipate a little longer to get to a construction.
Thanks.
Steph, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the street and drainage portion, total budget of $25.3 million. Again, touching on just a few, the Balboa Boulevard, Newport Boulevard pavement rehab, that project will follow the underground, the pole removals on the second phase of the undergrounding. The first phase, those poles will be coming down real soon on Jamb, uh, sorry, on Balboa, but then the second phase, which was our assessment District 111. So those, that project, it's, it's in design, and it likely will be constructed in the fall of '23, so a year plus from now. The Collins Island Bridge replacement, it's going to be coming forward to you for approval in the next, I think it's the 28th. And that will be tied to the drainage project, because it's, some of the outlet requirements are tied to that bridge. And then the East Coast Highway pavement rehab, that's the next piece from MacArthur to Jamboree, and we'll be starting the design again in this fall. And looking to do that work the following, the 2023, to, to do the construction on that. The Goldenrod Bridge, that one, we're, we did the work in-house on the design, and we'll be planning for construction later this year in, in the fall. Jamboree Road pavement rehab, that's under construction and will be completed in July, maybe early August. So that'll be completed then. Newport Coast Drive, Balboa Boulevard, this is the next piece of Balboa Boulevard down to G, so Medina to G, and then Newport Coast Drive. And it's in, currently in design, and it's proposed for construction in early 2023. And the San Miguel Drive pavement rehab, that's scheduled for design this fall as well, and will be probably bundled with the East Coast Highway project from Jamboree to MacArthur, that piece. Our slurry seal project next year is in Corona del Mar, the south portion, south of Coast Highway. And that'll be, as we've done every year in the spring of, of the year, so next spring, we'll be planning for that. Superior Avenue pavement rehab, we'll be doing that. We'll, we'll start the design early next year, and the plan for that is to pave after we have the bridge complete. So it'll finish off that. It also includes Hospital Road, so that's another portion of that project. And then Von Carmen Avenue pavement rehab, that, we have some funding, and I can't recall the name of that funding, but anyway, it's federal funding on that. It's a portion of it, and we'll be doing the design this year and the construction next spring, because we have a timeframe on that funding.
Excellent. Councilmember Dixon.
Okay. Thank you. This is all great. This is an example of Newport Beach being able to fund our infrastructure and port and streets. What I would, just want to comment on the impacts. So I'm supportive of the projects, I'm supportive of the budgeting, but let me just talk a moment about the impacts. So this is of the $100 million projects that are going to be rolling out during the rest of this, a balance of 2022 and then into 2023. What I would like to see is, you just mentioned, Jim, the, the estimated time period during which these projects will be completed. I'd like to see an overlay map of all these projects and the calendarization of these projects. And let me tell you why. As a resident or a business owner, like today, I leave my home on the beautiful streets, so that's a compliment to the Public Works Department, on Lido, Via Lido, Nord and Sude are beautiful. They've been repaved, re-slurried, all the great work you've done. So that's all great. However, there's, and that's public construction, public works. On any given street on Lido, and this is typical, according to Mr. Juerges, if he is here, he has told me that practically every street in Newport Beach has a home, private construction underway. So I pass, just from my home to the end of Lido, eight homes that are currently under construction. Okay. Big trucks, everything on our beautiful new streets. Okay, can't do anything about it, I'm not suggesting it. But then I leave Lido, get onto Pacific Coast Highway, go up to Jamboree, I'm making a left turn, and there's cones, and there's cones, and there's cones. And Jamboree, right now, is going through the project you just described. When I came back an hour later, the traffic was backed up from PCH all the way to Bison because of single lane. All I'm saying is, all that is fine, please be mindful that the residents are experiencing private construction in their neighborhoods, then public construction on our public streets. And it's going on simultaneously. And it's all good, and it's all for a good purpose. But please, as from a planning standpoint, just see what you're imposing on the residents of Newport Beach. Just as we went through Corona del Mar for the last several months, all looks beautiful, but it creates traffic jams, you know, the whole impact. So I think from a planning standpoint, you're great planners, let's just make sure we do whatever we can to minimize the concurrent impacts that people have from their neighborhoods to their streets. So you talk here about, well, just Jamboree again, and that's going to continue until July. And then, you know, you know the thing, you just said it. So please, can we just look, I'd like to see an overlay of the calendarization of all these projects, so we know how long we will experience time delays and other impacts. Okay? Thank you. It's all good. I want you to do it all. Just make it easier on the residents and the business owners. All right, thanks.
Please continue, Steph. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the transportation, budget of $2.7 million. And the main one here is the Newport Pier, McFadden Plaza rehabilitation. We've renamed that, that was, had a different name before, but that's the fund that will be doing that work. And we're currently reviewing the, our, the proposals, and the selection will come before you in Ju, on June 28th for that consultant. Park beaches, park harbors and beaches. On the park side, we have the Arroyo Park synthetic turf replacement, designing this fall and constructing next spring in 2023. Newport Coast Pickleball Courts, that one, the lease agreement is on today's agenda. And the design will start right after we get, if that's moved forward, and construction is proposed for early 2023. And then the Superior Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge and Parking Lot, the bids open tomorrow morning, and the project is scheduled to start in late summer in August. And it's about a 12 to 14 month construction window. On the harbor side, we'll be starting the design of the Balboa Yacht Basin Dock Replacement. That'll be, begin this fall, and, and construction will be the following fall, after the summer season. That would be the plan there. And the Harbor Piers Rehabilitation, including, one of those piers is a new pier at 29th Street, and that is currently in design and permitting through coastal, and will continue and be built at the same time in fall of 2023.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yeah, those are those items. Yeah. Page 69. So on page 69 of the CIP, we've got the Parks, Harbors and Beaches Project Summary. The, you'd find it on page 74, but it's the Playground Refurbishment Program. So that's 300 each year for the next three years. We talked earlier today during the finance portion of setting aside $1 million. Is that where that million would go toward, is the park refurbishment if we set it aside this year in addition to the, the amount, or is that?
We have worked with the Recreation Department, and for the last many years, been putting about $300,000 a year to do playgrounds and, and rubberized turf and things. I think what you're alluding to, Councilman O'Neill, is if we did the, the master plan, those are major facilities, we'd have to include those. So my guess is that program would wrap up into whatever we come up on the other side.
Yeah, that sounds right. That's why I wanted to make sure I understood where we're talking about, because when we're going through and doing the park audit, you know, 68 parks, we're going to find a lot to do. And so that's what that, that's the contemplation of the million dollars. So it would be in addition to this. This is, this is annual regular maintenance. The million is basically going toward what we expect to see when we get that audit back. Okay. All right, thanks.
Councilmember Avery.
Thank you. Could you just give an overview for everybody on the harbor-wide dredging schedule?
Sure. We've talked a lot about, this is another big project coming our way. We're currently, we've, as the public may or may not know, we've gone through and solicited $15 million in federal funds, thanks to the council's efforts over the years. We are currently done with the design, we're in the permitting phase of that project. We are in for our three major permits, which one is with the Water Board, one's with the Coast Commission, and then the Corps permits it. We're close to getting our first permit, as I understand it. Then it's scheduled right now to go to the Coast Commission in August to get their hearing, and that'll get their permit, and then the Corps will be right behind that. So the schedule is to probably start somewhere in the fall, maybe early winter, is what we're looking at. And it's a multi-month project, I'm, I'm thinking six to eight months. There's the construction of the cab, there's the whole harbor dredging, and we're also going to be working with a lot of the residents who've had trouble, obviously dredging, and this is an opportunity for them to get some of their dredging done too. So look for that project again, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dixon, another big project. Luckily, that's on the water, but it does create noise. The waterfront folks have been through that before, and it's, it's our, our other arterial in the city, the waterways, it'll suffer a little bit on that one, but very well needed. Hopefully, I answered your question.
Yes. Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. So in the water quality and environmental section, approximately $2.3 million in budget. And the one item there, the Newport Bay Trash Wheel, we have a Coastal Commission meeting in early June, so with that approval, more balls will drop on that one. And we're looking to bid that in August and start in December before the end of the year. Anything on there?
No, please.
Move on. Water Systems. So that budget is set at $7.2 million. And some of the items there, the Balboa Island, the P-19, we call it, that's our Phase Three project, and that replaces some of the old water lines in the alleys. And it's mainly in the area of what we call Assessment District 124. So the idea is to get those completed before we start undergrounding because of some conflicts of location and where the undergrounding needs to go. So that's why we're moving that ahead. It was in our master plan, when the AD came up, we moved that forward to this, this coming year for design, construction the following year. And then the West Terrace, Irvine Terrace Water Main Replacement, again, that one's designed in-house, we had staff work on that, and that's scheduled for this fall. Any comments on this section?
I'm seeing none. We keep moving. Thank you.
Okay. The wastewater, $2.3 million. Nothing specific here. Can move on. And then the other projects, approximately $3.9 million. And earlier was mentioned, the two fire station-related projects was the Alerting System and the Plimo Vent Exhaust System. So those two are in that portion of our budget. And then the Peninsula Encroachment Removal Program has been bid, and the contractor is on board, but we'll start that after Labor Day. We'll start that work.
Councilmember Dixon.
On that, I could remember when we were dealing with this issue with the Coastal Commission and just Commission and just our anticipation of the cost to the city, I thought there was going to be some way we were going to offset the outsourced cost for that. I mean, do a little bit here by, on our own, is that still contemplated?
So I heard about this, and there's a discussion at the Coast Commission about maybe utilizing city forces to try to do some work.
Correct.
Unfortunately, the other side of that coin is, we don't really have the forces available to do that. We're so skeleton skinned anyway, just to keep up with the normal maintenance. It is a little specialized in these areas, so it makes a lot more sense just do it as one contractor and do it. I don't know if there'd be significant savings if we tried to use our forces to do little components of it, but it would be a big disruption, particularly coming into summer in our beach operations. That's the crews that do that. With the 100 positions we lost many years ago, a lot of them came out of the Minnesota Operations Group, and there's just not the strength there to do a large project like that.
All right, because I think we were saying that we would save $400,000 if we did it ourselves. I guess that was a wishful thought. It's not going to happen. All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, so here's a summary of the CIP, and interesting to note that there's three items here that cover about 80% of our budget. That's facilities, street and drainage, and parks, harbors and beaches. Then here are the funds that those come from. Again, the grants, general fund, neighborhood enhancement, tidelands and FFP, they make up about 80% of our, the funds for this, for the CIP this year, coming year. With that, any further questions?
Wonderful. Councilmember Avery?
One more time. I just think this is extraordinary, and I think our Public Works Department planning is just, you know, red hot, and it's aggressive, and it is going to impact people, but I think the message is, it's just, we are doing the work to protect property values. I mean, that job on the peninsula, the medians, again, just fantastic, just changed it. And just staying ahead of this stuff, and I know, Dave, you always look in the rearview mirror, because as stuff is going up, other stuff is coming down, you know, nature's doing its thing, and just, I don't know of any other city our size that has this kind of devotion to keeping up public infrastructure, which is the bottom of the pyramid. It's what's holding everything up, really, literally and figuratively. And these projects are, they're just throughout the city, and it's, it's an extraordinary thing. And it's why, one key element why property values are where they are, because people see the commitment of this town, all the folks, our staff, directors, this council, to just keep it rolling and keep improving. So, thank you, it's just, and you're, I know yours, to your point, Dave, you guys are pushing hard with the group you've got to make it happen.
I'd actually want to return the compliment to the council. Since I've been here, it's almost 15 years, I gotta say, Newport has got its infrastructure down to a machine. Your leadership and your prior councils, and the FFP, and the master plans, and the funding, if the state or someone could work at this level, we'd be unbelievable. I mean, it's, because you feed that hopper and you just keep it going. You've got the funding in, you've got the foresight, you've got the plans looking down the road. It's a dream being a civil engineer in this city, so I'm thankful, I know Jim's that way, that it, we're sweating a lot, and we're trying not to break too many shells and make a lot of people mad because we're all over. But it's the leadership of the council and the fiscal nature of this city that's just allowed it to just take off. And I appreciate the opportunity to work here, thank you very much, though.
And I want to thank all of staff on this one, but especially our Public Works Department. As we started going through and looking, and utilities as well, I see Mark over there, when you start looking at some of the listings of what we actually do in this city, and I think anyone that would be reading this and wondering where our oil wells are, and some of our other facilities, not only are we doing beaches and piers, and piers in the harbor, piers out of the harbor, whole parking plans, keeping our pavement up, but everything we do, and I think this is a testament, when we went to look at our oil wells, they, they might be the cleanest oil wells that have ever existed. They're old, but the, the tank farm, even from oil professionals walked it and said, we've never seen a tank farm this clean, it's perfect. And it really just shows that, I think, it kind of, it transcends everything we do in the city. I think that's just important to remember, that no one's looking for disruptions, but when we have this many moving pieces, it's amazing we can get it done, and as efficiently and wonderfully as we do. So I commend you all, thank you so much. Now is the time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Oh, now is the time for public comments on the study session item. Nancy?
I just have one question, well, two questions, really. You mentioned the water wheel and the start date, and I missed it. Can you do a recap of that?
It was, we are, we're getting coastal approval this month, and we're going to bid it in August, and we're going to start it before the end of the year.
And I'll just caveat that, managing expectations. It's permit intensive, so it's all about the permits. They might approve the project, because sometimes the permit comes six months later with Coastal.
Okay.
So just manage the expectations.
I just missed that. And then, the second question that has to do with the, the oceanfront encroachments, I know we kind of got a black eye with the Coastal Commission on that one, and I'm wondering if our schedule for implementing this is still on track with them and their understanding, or are they still pushing us, are we behind, or how's that relationship being affected right now with this?
Nancy?
Sorry.
We'll, we'll take the questions and then have them answered. No, it's perfect.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, it's.
I love, the enthusiasm is everything we want in this world.
Okay, so.
So perfect, and I, I think, let's have all the questions, and then we can have staff run through them all, if that's acceptable. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the City Council, my name is Charles Klob. I've got a couple of thoughts. The first is regarding the refurbishment of the oil wells. Over the next few days, the Banning Ranch Conservancy is expected to get the last of their funding to make the purchase of the Banning Ranch. Before this council meets again, it'll probably be finalized. Are the refurbishments considered with whatever remediation the owner will have to do once the Banning Ranch is purchased? The second thing is, I have personal experience at the city of Costa Mesa, with new construction requires the owner of the property to re-slurry the area in front of the property. So that saves on the construction, if it's been slurried recently, and somebody builds a house there and it's a mess, they have to re-slurry in front of it as a part of their permitting process. Regarding the West Coast Highway and Pedestrian Bridge Project that was mentioned, that project, if I'm correct, contemplates the removal of the ability for pedestrians to cross the street at street-grade level. That's going to be a very controversial project. It's been moving along here, the few residents that have gotten wind of it have been upset. That needs to be sun, or brought to the attention of the public with lots of outreach, because it is a controversial thing with that plan. And then, lastly, my question is regarding the Old Newport Boulevard and Coast Highway improvements. What exactly is that portion of the project? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Blom and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. First, it was good to hear that at least one of the projects had been designed in-house, rather than going out to a design consultant through a contract. That is a competency we might want to encourage more use of. A second, I can't recall where I asked this, but I was assured that the fire station alert system that is being discussed here as part of this program is not the early earthquake warning system that some years ago we heard as a great idea to alert the fire stations, open the doors, get the trucks out in the case that there might be an earthquake coming. Since this is not that project, I'm wondering what, if we've decided that that is not feasible at this time, or why we're not pursuing that. And then the final comment is about the water wheel. I thought we heard at the Water Quality Coastal Tidelands meeting that there's just certain windows during the year when that can be constructed. I don't think it can be constructed during the rainy season, when there might be flow down San Diego Creek. So if it was not on one schedule, the delay might have to be an entire year to have it constructed during the right time. The chair here may remember what was said better than I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it up here, and staff can start running through some of those, and I can remind you if you need it.
You want to take them?
I'll take that last one.
Okay.
So regarding the water wheel, I mentioned that assuming permits, we move forward, we get it started in December, the idea there is to take care of the, some of the mitigation items. The actual work in the, in the creek itself would probably occur in the fall of the following year, or, or late spring maybe, but not during the summer, probably. Or maybe, actually, that's not really affecting our summer tourists, so it could happen during the summer. So, but we, we need to stay out of the bird season as well. So it may be right after September, when it's still dry, but not into the wet season when we're in the creek. But the mitigation will start this year. That's, that's the beginning of the project. That's the plan.
Wonderful.
Outside of bird season.
So real quick, I'll go through them, and if I catch them all. Old Newport, PCH, that project has to do with the pork chop right there in front of A's. We're trying to get that third lane through. We've had the bike coalition years ago, that's their number one priority to address. It's a real bad weave there. Unfortunately, it's a state-state highway, and Caltrans is just not cooperating as well as we like, but we are still trying to push that project through. Slurry sealing frontage properties is often a requirement also in Newport Beach, it depends on the property. So you'll often see a new house, they'll do some construction, trench and sewer lines, et cetera, and if it's really bad, we'll have them slurry. Actually, in our case, we'll have them repave in some areas. It also applies to utilities too, when they cut into a new street, we have them slurry and seal. Oil well refurbishment and Banning Ranch. Now, Banning Ranch has their own abandonment of wells, and they're going to be required by the state or whoever to replace those. Our wells are actually active wells, as you know, and the council looked at that. We have 15, and I don't believe our, we have an abandonment, nor are we are part of that project. So we're just running our wells as we would, and we'll take care of our own abandements as we need, but they're not part of Banning Ranch. And the last one I heard was the encroachment schedule for Peninsula Point. We mentioned that's going to be starting Labor Day with our best guests. That's, we're trying to stay out of the summer, basically ready to go, but we never like to work down the beach in the summer. So it's being bid, it'll come to the 28th, I believe, June 28th?
Yeah.
And then, we'll, I'm sorry, award that, and then we'll go ahead and have the contractors start.
We're within the timeline, right?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I believe within the timeline of Coast Commission.
Oh, that's what it was, yeah.
And I think that was all the questions.
There is a question regarding the outreach on the bridge project on Superior as well, from Mr. Klob.
So we went through that, as you recall, that project came through council, there was an EIR done on it. I understand there are some folks that still, we still need to educate on that. The plan is to remove the crosswalks. We have talked with the state of California and through the, the project on that. The, the bridge system would be much safer if we do get to that. The crosswalks, that's one of our more challenging crosswalks in the city, just because we have 11 lanes of traffic you're crossing with a really fast street. So the experts, the traffic folks aren't here tonight, but I can have that discussion at some point. Taking the crosswalks out, we do that in a lot of big cities to reduce the conflict between the cars and the pedestrians. We're also going to be able to put the bikes on that elevation too, although we'll keep the bike lanes on Coast Highway for the, the roadies that really like to ride on the street.
On the west coast portion, we haven't done any environmental or design, so you said we've done the environmental.
I'm sorry, Superior.
Superior, but we haven't done, we haven't even started that contract yet. There's a contract in place, it's been approved, but we haven't started any work on that yet.
Excellent.
And then I'll come back through council.
Perfect. And then Mr. Mosher's comment on the fire alert system, do you have any, we're not doing the earthquake one, is that?
Not the earthquake, early detection one, at this point in time, and it's something that we will look into.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, Councilmember Dixon?
What are we coming back up with, sir?
There is no more public.
Oil wells.
Glad you brought that up.
I remember a few years ago when the price of a gallon, or a barrel of oil was down to 30, $25, now it's up to 100. It's not a big deal, we don't get a lot of revenue, but are we factoring that into our projected revenue base at the, I mean, this year, maybe?
The production of the oil wells is part of our revenue stream, and they update that, so if the cost per barrel's 100 versus 60, that'll come into the revenue stream.
So that's good. Because I remember when we were thinking about doing something, it was only 30 million, and it wasn't going to be worth much, but now, I mean, or $30 a barrel, now it's 100. We were looking at something a few years ago, but anyways, so that's, I guess, good news only on a, on a very limited basis.
Any other comments up here? Wonderful. Well, the, one thing I will say about the oil wells that we, we learned when we were down there is the gas bribe product, which I didn't think many people knew this, is pumped to Hoag, and Hoag uses it to power some of their systems over there, which I thought was absolutely amazing, that we're, we're using part of our fuel to, it's just great, I think we're just great. Wonderful. All right, now is the time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Well then, we are recess till 6? That's recess till 6, and well, we'll see you, hold on. I call the meeting to order for the May 24th regular City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Mayor Muldoon has an excused absence.
Now is the time for the invocation by Pastor Jorge Molina of Mariners Church Irvine.
Let's pray. Dear God, thank you so much, Father, for this opportunity we have to gather together. Thank you for the opportunity we have to pray for this amazing city. Thank you, Father, for the leaders that you have placed here. So we pray, God, that you grant wisdom, discernment. We pray, Father, for blessing on their families. As this job takes them away from it, we pray also that you may make this city flourish. Thank you once again, God, for this opportunity we have. Amen.
And Councilmember Avery, if you'll lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge to our great nation. We stand to the flag of the United States of America.
Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Now is the time for council announcements or reports from council members on committee activities, and the time for council members to request an A item, A1 item to be placed on a future agenda. Councilmember O'Neill, do you have any announcements or reports?
Just, boy, there was a lot, actually, that happened over the last couple of weeks, but I'm just going to talk to one item, which is, I went down and spoke to the Laguna Woods City Council in my role as DCA San Joaquin Hills Board President, I'm sorry, Chairman, and I just wanted to say to our colleagues in Laguna Woods, thank you for having me, and I appreciated the opportunity to go experience another city council's presentations and meeting. I will note that that was about four or five days after the shooting that had occurred in a church in their community, and I thought that the, the memory of the people that were involved, as well as Dr. Chang, who had died, was particularly well handled by their mayor and, and city council. And so, again, I appreciated the opportunity to be with them while they were going through both that grieving process and also their official business. Thank you.
Councilmember Duffield? Councilmember Dixon?
Okay, I have many, but I'll maybe consolidate here, just a couple of updates before we get to some slides, or maybe we're going to put the slides up now, I'll do that first. Okay. So many of the community are aware of the great idea, they touch a truck event, if the mayor were here, he'd be saying this, so I'm sure he'll say it when he is back for the next meeting. But I'm very pleased that so many members of our community attend the Touch a Truck on last Saturday, May 14th, at Balboa Pier Parking Lot, it was a beautiful day. About 1,000 people were there to get up close and personal to heavy trucks and equipment, and learn more about them. That was a lot of fun and educational. I'd like to thank our Public Works Department and our city partners and contractors for putting on a great community event, and I think there is wide support to do it. I know the mayor enjoyed it with his little boy, and I was climbing around some of these things, too, but it was really, really a fun day, very unique. Next item, Make a Splash Pick Up Trash. So I mentioned it at our last meeting, so I'll say it again. It's our anti-litter campaign, and this week, the city is distributing materials and signs for a new anti-litter campaign that will run throughout the summer, so all of our residents and visitors are mindful of keeping our city clean. The theme is Make a Splash Pick Up Trash, Keep Newport Beach Beautiful. And this summer, our residents and visitors will see signs at the entrances to beaches, public parks, and facilities, and at participating private businesses. And the goal of this campaign is to remind people that all of us, residents, business owners, visitors, and city government, need to work together to keep Newport Beach beautiful. And you can get more information by emailing nbclean@newportbeachca.gov or on the web at newportbeachca.gov/clean. Okay, and then another event we're starting this weekend is Memorial Weekend already, and as a reminder, the Balboa Peninsula Trolley is returning for the summer, beginning Saturday, May 28, and it will run through Labor Day. And the regular hours are 10:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. The trolley route is the same as in prior years, and stop number one is right next to, adjacent to Avon Street, where there is free parking. And I remember, and I'll remember, but I enjoyed riding the trolley until we had to suspend it because of COVID, so this is a great reappearance of the trolley, and for residents and visitors alike. Residents would tell me that they could not, on weekends, busy summer weekends, where there's limited or no parking on the peninsula, that they could go to church at the two churches that are on the peninsula, and they could park at Avon. Visitors don't have to drive around for an hour looking for parking, and they could choose whichever beach they want to go to along the route. So it's a real, a great benefit for our visitors, and also, we minimize the traffic slightly and also alleviate the parking problems. So you could ride along the route and get back on and off at any of the 22 marked trolley stops, all for free. And I think that's it on my official slide program. Just a quick update, the aviation committee with Mayor Protam Blom and I conducted last week. We continue to make progress, thanks to our ad hoc committees and staff working with the carriers and the general aviation community. I, as well as Councilmember Brenner, attended with the mayor the boat lift launch for handicapped people at Marina Park, and I'm sure the mayor will talk about this next meeting, because it was a special project of his own, and it's great that the city can do that. The mayor's dinner, I think we were all there, was a fantastic evening, so I just want a special shout out to Speak Up Newport for organizing another great mayor's dinner, and it was about 500 people, and it was just a great evening, and the mayor did a great job. Last Saturday was, the mayor and I were attended the Castaways, the Exchange Club of Newport Harbor, Castaways, up at Castaways, the Armed Forces Day, the flag ceremony with the members of the armed forces, and there'll be another similar event at noon next Monday on Memorial Day. So it's open to the public, and you can purchase a flag and donate it to, in someone's honor, someone you know, or someone who's active military service. And one of the 1,775 flags, American flags, and one Ukrainian flag is on display up there. And also yesterday, a number of us, including Councilmember Duffy, we were at the police promotional service yesterday, or event yesterday, for the promotion of two of our police officers, Sergeant Prince and Lieutenant Shiva, how do I say that? Shiva V, Shiva V? Anyway, they were promoted, and it was always a nice event when the police does this. Thank you, Chief Lewis. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner.
Yes, well, in addition to all the activities that Diane just quoted, where we've been in the last two weeks, I also graduated from the Citizens Police Academy, and that was a fabulous event and a fabulous experience. 12 Wednesdays in a row, going to the police department, learning about not every aspect. I'm sure there's still parts that I don't know about, but a lot of the different aspects. And they do this program normally twice a year, so they will start another program in September, and anyone in the city can apply to be part of this program, and you could start as soon as next September. So I'm encouraging everyone I know to do it. It was fantastic, and now I'm going to see if I can do the Fire Academy. We'll see if that, with a little bit of claustrophobia, I'm not too sure I'm qualified for that, Jeff, but we'll see. Okay, and then I had planned to A1 an item tonight to talk about the fire down in Liso Niguel or Laguna Niguel, and our beautiful city manager and our fire chief had already preempted me on that, and they are going to be presenting at the next council meeting on that topic, because there is a lot of concern by the people that live near Buck Gully and other open spaces here in Newport about how we're different and how that similar occurrence in our area would have played out. Many of those were new homes that had a lot of fireproofing construction materials, and a lot of ours do not, so I'm looking forward to that presentation, and people, you really might want to tune in if you're concerned about the fire danger in our area at the next council meeting. I have, oh, I also attended the Christmas Boat Parade Awards that the Chamber of Commerce did. We were at, for the mayor's dinner and for that, we were at the New Vea Hotel, and it's looking beautiful and is really going to be an enhancement to our community. And the announcement that I have is that our summer concerts on the Green are back. We are so excited. We've got the first one coming up on Memorial Day weekend, Sunday, May 29, at 6:00 p.m., but come early and get a seat, because we are having Mark Woods and the Parrot Head Band, and it's going to be a Jimmy Buffett night. I think it will be very well attended, and I was encouraging different groups that I'm part of to come and get their group together, to all sit together on the lawn and enjoy the concert. So that will be good. We have four other concerts coming up during the season, but this is just the first, and so we're hoping that everybody gets into the parrot head mood. Thank you.
Councilmember Avery.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I attended the Finance Committee meeting last week, and the OC Sanitation District Administration meeting, and the homeless ad hoc meeting, and also the Christmas Boat Parade Awards, which was small but nice, and I think it was important to thank those folks for going to all the trouble to decorate their homes and their boats, keep that tradition rolling. And I went to the Touch a Truck event. My wife and I were leaving town, so we had, we got up early, and we were like one of the first folks there, and there was still, there was a lot of trucks there, and I think most everything was moved in, so it was kind of cool just to walk around and see it, and it was, I'm a truck guy, I mean, I just, I climbed on a truck. Julie got up in the cab of the unusually large Newport Beach, you know, dump hauler, that all white, and I was talking to the guys about how much work they put in to get those trucks cleaned up for that event. I mean, just, it was, they were sparkling, it was something, a lot of pride, and Micah Martin was really something, our deputy director of Public Works, he got the whole group together there to give him a safety lecture, you know, just helping, you know, because those trucks, climbing up on those trucks is, you've got to be really on the ball, paying attention to folks, you know, especially getting kids up there, and giving everybody's really neat time, but also just making sure it was safe, so it was really cool just to stand back and watch him really get everybody together on the safety protocols. And the mayor's dinner was fabulous, and, you know, I'm always reminded about just the community coming together, and all the, you know, past mayors coming in, and just the conviviality of the whole thing. It's a really neat, you know, community event, and I hear next year's mayor's dinner is going to be a blowout, so I wouldn't miss it.
Thank you. I, too, was over at the mayor's dinner, and I thought, as I escaped and went wandering through the Vea project that is still very much under construction, it is so amazing to see what we can do to reimagine something in this city and make it new again. And I think many people that would drive Newport Center that had looked at that hotel over the years maybe thought that we could never bring it to the level that they've brought it to, and, you know, the views and the sight planes are out of control, and the decks, and kind of, it's really, I think, now going to be a community resource. It's nice to see those possibilities. I also, really quickly, for the Aviation Committee meeting, I wanted to say thank you to Tara's not here, but Tara Finnegan, our Assistant City Manager. When you watch her run those meetings with Diane and I, it is, I feel like she should have a sainthood given to her after the end of them. They tend to be a little contentious, which makes them a lot of fun. You really get to feel the opinion of the community at large in them, but I think the takeaway is that we've made such great progress, you know, really separating the groups, getting focus on it, you know, Chair Dixon's done an amazing job with that as well, but there really has been a huge amount of change, and I know it's hard to hear when they're taking off over you, but really, just the levels of communication with both the FDA and the airlines has been second to none, and I really, I really do have to give Tara and the whole city staff team credit for that. I think it's unbelievable. And then I was up in Sacramento for the weekend, Newport Aquatic Center, I know I talk about this often, but our, both our boys and girls teams were up there competing for state championships. The boys team came in first, and will be going to Florida in a couple of weeks to compete for the national championship, and if they win that, they'll be off to London. And the girls team came in third, and they will also be going to Florida, so it's a pretty exciting time. They're looking to take back their national champions, and I think we deserve it. We're pretty good at these sports around these spots, so, and that is all I have to add on that. Oh, yes, Mr. Duffield.
Well, I didn't hear anybody bring this up, but before we end this, I would like to say we went to the fire and lifeguard badge pinning ceremony that I always like. You said it was the police thing, right? This is the fire and lifeguard, and it's just so great to see these guys, and they're all guys, 100%. We've got to work on that. But anyway, it just, to hear their story and how hard they have to work, they're already working hard all day, and then they have to go home and study more to get this new position, and it just is great to see how strong they are in protecting us. They're great people, and all gone to colleges, all have degrees, and Jeff does a great job presenting it to them, and they love it, and it's, I think, I'm going to miss those things. They're fun to watch. Thanks.
Councilmember Avery.
Thank you. I also attended, there were so many events last week. I also attended the Fire Department Promotion Badge Pinning, and I agree with Mr. Duffield completely. It was, it was really something, and the commitment and how well spoken everybody was, and so, coming from their heart, and how much, you know, the fire, their job means to them, and I think that's true of all our public safety folks. I mean, we know it's true. It's really something, the pride is there, and the work ethic, and just the culture is really, you know, seems to be pretty fun, considering the amount of hard work, and, you know, putting themselves on the line so many times, and they've just got this great culture going, obviously. So it was something to be there, and the families, the young families, we're supporting, these jobs are supporting a lot of kids. It's really something. So I was honored to be there. Thank you.
Okay, now I have to say something about the police and fire awards. I just wanted to say one thing that we heard from both the police, the fire, and the lifeguards was how important it is to them to be part of something bigger than themselves, and it was really obvious in the way they spoke about our city and our fire department and our police department, and I just, I've really recognized that since I'd been in this program, that that's one of the things that our city employees get that, we get that as members of the council, and our public servants get that, and it really is. It's something that I think we can all feel, that we're part of something that's bigger than ourselves, and it's really special to be here. Thank you.
I was just seeing if Councilmember O'Neill needed to say something else. We're now on matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. Councilmember O'Neill has asked council to consider adopting a resolution supporting Senate Bill Number 904, which will amend California state law to clarify current statutes and ensure the criminal justice system is helping educate and treat those offenders who are suffering from addiction and controlled substances. So let's go and take a straw vote.
It's unanimous, 6-0.
Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 9. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, do you have any conflicts to announce regarding items 1 through 9?
Yes, I'm going to item number 6, based on real property interest.
Wonderful. Councilmember O'Neill, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related items 1 through 9?
None.
Councilmember Duffield? Councilmember Dixon?
I have none.
Councilmember Brenner?
None.
Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
And I have none as well. Councilmember O'Neill, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move the consent calendar with the amended minutes provided to us at the dais.
And seconded by Councilmember Dixon. Wonderful. We'll now have public comments on consent calendar items 1 through 9. I was really just waiting for you, Jim, but, okay, perfect. Any additional council comments on the consent calendar? Wonderful. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Okay. It looks like we are, we'll now take public comments on non-agenda items.
Mayor Trout, Mayor Protam Blom, and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier, and I want to speak to you this evening about agenda setting and Measure B. Measure B has generated some healthy and interesting debate about who sets the agenda in Newport Beach, whether the city manager has too much control over that, and whether we need a charter amendment to take that control back from the city manager. I wanted to point out that our current city charter is totally silent on who sets the agenda for the council meetings in Newport Beach. There's not a word about it in it. It does not assign the authority to the city manager, who sets the agenda currently is totally up to this council by council policy. And we saw an example of the current policy just a few months ago, Agenda Item Roman numeral 11, you just had a show of hands. You currently require three people, three of you, to concur in putting something on the agenda in the future. totally up to this council by council policy. And we saw an example of the current policy just a few months ago. Agenda item Roman numeral 11, you just had a show of hands. You currently require three people, three of you, to concur in putting something on the agenda in the future. That is your choice, though, and you could change that choice at any time. And it's equally important as that it's not in the charter to know that that has not been the practice for a very long time in Newport Beach. I don't think any of you were here on the council prior to that policy coming into effect. And for many years, for most of the life of the city, council members simply asked for an item to be put on the agenda during the announcements, and it happened. The idea that you need to have three votes is one that was introduced in the city of Anaheim by their now disgraced and recently resigned mayor, and it was heavily criticized there as a ploy to suppress unpopular or things that the mayor did not want to do being on the agenda. I think that policy, since it is not a permanent one in Newport Beach, would be a very bad thing to put into our city charter. The only other city in Orange County that, who has a charter that speaks to anything about agenda setting is the city of Santa Ana. And you may be surprised, but I am not. And the people of Santa Ana, in their charter, require their council to allow any council person to simply ask for an item to be put on the agenda, and it will be. I, I think that is a good policy. It's one that promotes public discussion. There are arguments both ways, but making this rule of three people having to agree to put something on the agenda, which can lead to Brown Act violations if you're trying to lobby your colleagues to see if that can happen. That is just something we should not put in our charter so that it cannot be easily changed by future councils. Thank you.
My name is Susan Skinner, and I am here to correct misinformation about the flawed elected mayor proposal, Measure B. In debates and flyers, this is stated to be a simple proposal to elect our mayor. It is not simple, and it is not just about electing our mayor. Rather, it is about converting the role of mayor to an extremely powerful position, more powerful than any other mayor in Orange County. History has shown us that concentrating power in the hands of one person is never a good idea, which is exactly why Republican groups such as the Lincoln Club, Democrats such as the Newport Beach Democratic Women's Club, as well as virtually every former mayor, former city council member and city manager oppose this initiative. Their collective wisdom is that this is a really bad idea for Newport Beach. This proposal will allow one person to stay on council for up to 16 years, effectively torpedoing the 1992 voter-approved term limits. It also eliminates many of the checks and balances that normally exist on a city council, and it opens the door to undue influence or outright corruption. Many people are referring to this powerful mayor position as, quote, "one-stop shopping" for special interest groups, and they're right. One-stop shopping may explain the huge influx of special interest money in support of Measure B. One-stop shopping might be another way to explain why the FBI indicted the powerful elected Anaheim mayor for corruption last week. Power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. In Anaheim, the elected mayor was able to keep other council members from adding their items to the agenda. He actually limited amounts of time that the other council members could speak. But think about that. Think about that. The very powerful mayor prevented other elected council members from discussing items of importance during city council meetings. He gave more time to speak to people and groups that he liked and less time to people that he didn't like. In short, he ran Anaheim like a mafia don. The Newport Beach elected mayor proposal will give an elected mayor even more power than the Anaheim mayor had. Be careful what you ask for. If Measure B passes, it can only be unwound by another vote of the people. Our city attorney does not allow me to advise a no vote on Measure B, so I will simply ask that those who have not yet voted learn everything they can about this flawed measure. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
Good evening, city council members and city officials. My name is Joe Garrett. I live at 611 Poppy Avenue in Coronel Mar. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for over 35 years. I'm here to discuss my property that I purchased in 1993, that I'm now have plans and working with an architect to put in duplex and an ADU. I've been working over the last year with state officials from the Housing and Community Development Department, along with entitlement consultant, my architect, and city staff in trying to get my project off the ground. So far, so good. I think the city's come a long way in, in promoting ADU use. I'm just here tonight to try to get a clarification and put some thoughts in everybody's head regarding ADUs. My last conversation that I had, and I'm trying to reach a common sense solution to what could be a, a real dilemma and a problem in, in creating these ADUs. So in my particular case, I have a duplex, and I am entitled to have an ADU in it. So the question that I had, or the, the comments that I got back from the state had to do with building it out in two steps. And I just wanted, wanted to encourage and let everybody know that if you build a front unit and a back unit and you leave your ADU empty, it, and then you have to come back after a certificate of occupancy and try to build it out. Not only is it difficult and is going to be more expensive for the applicant, it's also going to be difficult and more expensive for the city and all the people that work for the city, because they're going to have to come back a second time and do all that work. It does, it just doesn't make sense to build a building in two phases. It also makes it extremely unlikely that you can get financing for it. I've spoken to bankers, and they're just saying, they don't even understand it. So what I'm proposing, and what was proposed to me from the state, was to do it in a two-step application. So it can, you go through, in other words, I would get an application for the duplex, go through that, get that approved, and then get an application for the ADU, and go through planning and get that approved, but the construction to be all done at the same time. That's a common sense approach, the way that I see it, and hopefully, and other builders, I'm sure, would agree with me. It just doesn't make sense for the applicant or the city. It also puts an undue burden on the applicant, which is against state ADU law, to, to put those burdens on them. So this may be something that has already been established and taken care of with the planning department. I don't know yet. We haven't submitted our plans. And so I'm hoping to work collaboratively with them, but I wanted to bring this one particular possible glitch up. Sorry. I'm all finished. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, anybody? Nope?
Wonderful.
All right. Thank you.
Any further public comments on non-agenda items? Wonderful. We're now going into the public hearing. Item number 10 is ordinance number 2022-13, Amendment to the Municipal Code, Chapter 14.16, Water Conservation and Water Supply Shortage Program. Wonderful. Do we have a staff report?
Yes.
Perfect.
Good evening. Mayor Protem, city council members, we have a very brief staff report to present to you. I'm Mark Vakoyevich, your Utilities Department Director. To my left here is Sanjay Ghar. He's our consultant that's been helping us on water issues and this ordinance. And then also to my left is Stefan Kateron, our Utilities Manager. As you mentioned, we're here to update the Water Conservation and Water Shortage Programs, also known as our municipal code, Section 1413. We talked about this back in November of last year. We were hoping to time it with some state things that were happening now, and so now it's, we're bringing it forward here for your consideration. Chapters in the code are, there's specific chapters in the code. In abbreviated version, there are definitions, there's actions, and then there's exemptions, right? That's what a code kind of talks about, and this is what we're doing for our water conservation. And the Water Conservation Code's been around for many, many years, and the idea is, is to prevent the waste of water, and then also when you have these events where you need to reduce your water usage. In general, we've updated a lot of the sections, clarified things, made edits, removed things like referencing the 2013 year. We've added some new permanent restrictions and, and got it more compliant with state requirements. And we're going to go through those real briefly. So on the, on the permanent restrictions, these are also known as, these are things you're not allowed to do, right? And we've changed a few of them. One of them is no sprinkler irrigation watering between 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The idea here is evaporation, right? The daytime evaporation, so the effectiveness of your watering is much less. Pretty much every city agency around us has this as a standard requirement, as a best practice. Also obligations to fix, you know, once you have a leak, once you've been notified, you know, the obligation is, is that you should fix it in three days to prevent waste. And then all these key provisions that are already in there, like no excessive runoff, no washing down, no watering during rainfall, those are all the, the key things that are in there, you know, things like hotel linens and, and restaurant water and things like that. Again, generally, to reduce the waste of water. Now, if we need to enter into one of these levels, you have the process and the procedure to get there. I would describe our existing process or procedure as very clunky. I remember rereading it. It took me three times, just to make sure I have every step figured out. And so we've put together here just a very straightforward, easy to understand, consistent with many other agencies, linear process, which gives council the ability to make changes also. But basically, if we have a determination where we have a water supply shortage, the city manager and I follow the criteria, we bring it to council, we present the information, and the council has the option of determining a lot of the different methods, the timing and the quantities, based on what we're going to recommend to you. And then also, we've built in, and this is for us, some substituted things that we submitted in today, a six-month duration on any of these levels. And I'm going to go through the levels real quickly here. So each shortage level, again, we had four shortage levels, now we have six. This brings us into compliance with, with, with the state, and then also our water shortage contingency plan. Each level has a different range, and then it has some different specifics, for example, watering days. But within each range, we have to figure out what are the amounts per account. Last time we talked, we talked about, you know, the differences between a residential account and a commercial account, or a hospital and things like that. They would all have a different, a different amount based on the year that, that is chosen. So for example, when we, when we bring a resolution to you, which we are planning to bring a resolution to you in June for a Level 1, this is what it would kind of look like. It would say, these are the predetermined level actions that you have in your ordinance. So in your ordinance, we already, it already talks about how many watering days you have, and then the overall percentage cutback. But within that overall cutback, we have all of the itemized accounts, and you have the water year, you have the start time, the stop time of when you want this ordinance to start, you know. For example, it doesn't have to be immediately effective. You can say, look, we want to give 45 days before we make this effective, if we have that kind of flexibility, things like that. And then as well, the implementation and the outreach method. So here's an example. This is, this is a Level 3 water shortage. So to give you a visual, what that says is, and let's say for, are we've determined, or the state has determined for us, it says you need to cut your water by 25% or else. So what that means is, we go to a Level 3, we're in that, in that 20 to 30% band, two days a week watering, it becomes a requirement, all leaks have to be fixed within 24 hours. But now it becomes the real math, the real, the nitty gritty of what do we tell each account holder? So we have different requirements for the different levels of accounts, right? A hospital, for example, is going to be exempt. So if they're, if they're cutting 0%, how do I get to my 25? That means I need to cut irrigation even more. And there's a difference between even single family and multifamily, because they have less, less landscaping and things like that. And so we've calculated that all back of house, and so if we enact an ordinance, we bring it to you and say, look, this is what we recommend based on usage of how we can achieve this 25%. And then we talk to you about, is 25% a goal? Is it a hard requirement? And, and we talk about what's going to be the process for that. And that basically concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. In the staff report, I did, and, and talk about our current drought situation. There was a, a state board action this morning regarding further restrictions, which we're going to have to bring back to you. For example, restricting, restrictions for artificial, or for turf in commercial and industrial areas. Think of like, you know, the little grass parkway in front of a gas station and things like that. The state has now said that that's all going to be restricted, and that was effective this morning. So we have more to come there in, in our drought situation. On the good news end is, is we've done really well with conservation. We've done extremely well. When you look at our usage from 20 years ago, we used 25% less water. We use less water today than we did back before the last drought in 2015. And then we've made the investments, right? You know, jamboree irrigation, recycled water irrigation, all the investments we've made with the Orange County Water District and, and the groundwater replenishment system and our groundwater basin. We've, we've made ourselves as self-sufficient as possible through our investments and smart planning. And so when I present the drought stuff in the next couple of weeks, I think it's going to be a pretty good news story in comparison to a lot of the other situations out there. But I'm happy to answer any questions, and there's, these are our recommendations. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Brenner.
Mark, I was watching Spectrum TV the other night, and they were talking about the drought statewide, and they specifically were mentioning Orange County and the efforts that we've gone to to recycle water and replenish the underground aquifers and all that. And they said, a big part of the problem is that that's not been done statewide, that the, that's not a prevailing action that has been taken. So, and, and I do understand, I know when I have attended some sanitation district meetings for Brad, that they were talking about how we have visitors from all over the world that come to Orange County to talk about, to see how we do it and, and find out how they could do. So is the state looking at how they can do more of what we're doing?
Yeah, absolutely. With our investments that we've made as a county, first of all, we've been blessed to have this basin, right? I mean, it's, it's an envy of the state, too. It's very functional, right? The one good thing about the Newport-Inglewood Fault is it's a nice underwater dam right there to help us capture that water. But the investment in groundwater recycling and wastewater recycling, and that's the plan for the future, right? With all of these other agencies that haven't done it to date, that's where they're putting a lot of their money in. When you look at Metropolitan's, you know, plan and all of these other agencies, it's happening. They're just now behind. In some cases, they can't put it in, they don't have somewhere to put it. We have, we were fortunate enough to have a place to put it and recycle it and have it re-treated through the ground.
It's very impressive.
Councilmember Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. A couple of questions following up on that. There's been, you hear about the discussion that what we also need in the state of California are, is to construct reservoirs, and, and there's been a bond measure that was approved several years ago. Any progress on that front by the state?
They're working on it. Yes, I mean, they have plans for some, some large reservoirs, and that's what's needed. And the idea is, is to capture as much water as you can during wet years so you can use it in, in dry years. And they have those plans. I don't know the current status is, you know, modern-day reservoirs, that the idea is, is to not put the reservoirs on a river, right? To put them, not put a dam, so in other words, put it somewhere off-site, you know, and they have, there's a few that they're working on right now.
So when I read the current, current news stories about the drought and the governor's proposed air actions or emergency actions, and it's to reduce water usage by 25%, even though we have experienced better compliance with those goals, would we still have to be subject to the state's more draconian conservation measures?
Well, what they're doing now, I think it really benefits us for the investments that we've made and the supply that we've kind of protected, right? And if you think of the last drought, they really kind of had these general percentages. Everybody has to cut back these percentages, no matter what. So now we're in a, in a position where we have to certify ourselves every year based on our own needs and our, and our requirements and what we've invested in, and we're working on that certification. And we're working on that certification, and it looks fairly positive, you know? It looks better than what you're going to see on the news. That still means, still doesn't mean we shouldn't conserve. We have to conserve, and that's really going to be the future and the lifestyle of what we have, which really means, don't waste water, right? And we're trying to find these ways to not waste water and then to repurpose it, right? So we've already put all this money in repurposing our water, and that's going to pay dividends as we kind of move forward in this drought. So everyone, to answer your question very briefly, most agencies are going to be graded on their own water supply assessments. That's the plan, and that's the difference from last time.
Well, and also, to your own personal reflections on the complexity of what we had, I appreciate how you've summarized this. I mean, it looks very straightforward. Also, another question. Have I read correctly that the Metropolitan Water District is, or some water agency that regulates our water is going to be increasing rates significantly of the water prices that we buy, the 25% water that we buy? Is that true? Or did I understand that correctly? Or is it under consideration?
They are increasing their rates, right? The Metropolitan Water District, which receives water from the State Water Project, as well as the Colorado River, the percentage rate increase that was approved is somewhere between 5% and 8%. I can't remember the exact number. But I think like we talked about during the water rate study, is that water rate inflation, I would argue, was much higher than standard, you know, 2% industry, right, inflation. We did factor in a lot of that in our rate study, so that's a good news component.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Seeing no other comments up here, let's go out to the public.
Mayor Protem Blom, and members of the council, my name is Jim Bozier. I have a, perhaps it's just me, I have a concern in the red line, pages 1027 and following, seeing the many definitions that are being proposed to be removed from the code. The code uses throughout it the expression billing period, but the definition of billing period is being removed here on page 1027. It uses many, many times the word potable water. The definition of what that means is being deleted. And a few others that I think are questionable. I'm not sure why we're defining recycled water and not potable water. But basically, I just don't understand why the definitions are being removed. I don't think they're elsewhere in the code, and I don't think we're saving a great deal of ink by, you know, taking them out. So I would think that those should be left in. And then the second comment I had this morning, I was telling a friend about my very embarrassing misreading of part of this proposed code. And she was telling me that if, she was told she had to reduce her water use, one way she would do that is she would spend more time at the fitness club that she goes to that has a swimming pool and showers, and take showers there that she otherwise would And she was wondering how a city could control what's going on there. I did not guess from reading this, what we just saw in the presentation, that there would be different cutbacks. This gave a range of cutbacks. And I don't know how detailed that would be. So there would be something maybe for residences, something for businesses. I don't know if that goes into detail. It would be different for a restaurant than some other business or whatever. But in her example, that fitness club may have other people minded like her going there. And that's not really conserving water, but in her observation, they had no control over what people did in the showers. So number one is, as written here, could that club apply for relief? And should they get relief from the cutback being imposed on other businesses? And then how realistically would we expect them to control what their patrons are doing in a business of that sort? So the new question, I have not an answer for that, but I think it's something that deserves discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions from the public, comments?
I'm Chuck Fancher. I live in Jasmine Creek. I'm a member of the city's Water Supply Committee. And I'm not in front of you tonight speaking as that committee member. We attempted to raise the question of water conservation to be considered by our committee, and we were directed by the leadership of the committee and David Webb that it's not in our purview to entertain the question and to opine to the city council on it. So I do not stand before you as a member of the committee, but as an individual. I think this ordinance is well-written, well-constructed, and I'm impressed by it. I'd like to make one comment and raise one question. The comment is that we set, the ordinance sets a base, which is a year and a customer's use in that year is the base year, against which future reductions are required if the city calls a Level 1 through 6 incident or episode. And I think that I would suggest to the city and to our community that we consider using what Mr. Vikoyevich has called a water budget, as opposed to a year's experience in consumption. And if this ordinance simply be expanded with the inclusion of words allowing for this utilities director with approval from council to construct a water budget-based program for determining the base year, rather than a rote year of water use. The reason is simple. If you have a customer who, I think there are people who, just by their own values and their own practice, don't waste water. There are people who don't care, and they will use whatever water they wish to, and they will pay for it, and that's their privilege. But if we get into using simply the base year, we're allowing people who have had inordinate water use to have a lesser burden than those people who have conducted themselves to use moderate water or to watch themselves. So take Mr. Vikoyevich's year, Level 3 example that was on the board. If there's a 35% reduction requirement for single-family residences, and there was a single-family that conducted itself with moderation, and they've got to cut back 35%, they are being treated differently and perhaps unfairly than those customers that had used twice the amount of water, or you pick a number over the moderate user. And we need to get that out of the system, and it's a matter of fairness and parity. It's work to get there, but you need to get there. Second thing, it doesn't speak to violations in this material that was given to us. If we're not using carrots, we have to use sticks. What is the stick?
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Perfect. Let's bring it back up here. Councilmember, again, Councilmember Dixon.
A comment of Mr. Fancher's comment. I do remember when we went through the last drought, the comment that you made about fairness, that came up a lot in public comment. Do you remember that, Mark? That people felt that they were two people in a household, and they were, you know, they ran the dishwasher once a week, they did their laundry once a week, they took showers every other day, and they're going to be held to the same reduction goal or requirement as somebody who is not so water conservation-based. I think that's, maybe you, I would appreciate if you talked to Mr. Fancher about this water budget idea. So it is a fair system.
Well, let me respond to that. So we were able to prepare this as council directed us, to do comparative year-by-year basis. But what we added in here is, in this very last line I'm here, is predetermined minimum usage stopgaps. So this is why the math gets, let's say, for example, I need 25% overall, but it may be, it equates to 35% for residential. But within that 35%, if you're already an official minimum user, you're under the stopgap threshold, it doesn't, it doesn't or may not apply to you, or you may have a lower percentage. That's how you get to that math, that, you know, these equations to get there. So we've kind of built in that little factor of safety, and of course, you do have the relief from compliance and different things that are built into the code, too.
Well, that's good. And then that will be something, if we go forward with that, that the community, to communicate with the community about. Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Avery.
Mark, is irrigation the number-one use in terms of, or do we know that?
No, I mean, residential is the number-one use. So 65% of our water use is in residential, you know, in round numbers, and other, you know, 15% is going to be in irrigation-only accounts. Now, within residential, there includes irrigation, but we have dedicated irrigation account meters. So for example, a park to an HOA, or, you know, our own landscaping, and then another 15% or so for commercial.
And we also know how much landscaping residents have.
Yes.
To each house, right?
Yeah.
We've done the, what is it? GIS has done that.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, we have that already measured, you know, if down the road you want to do a water budget, you know?
Right. Great. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Neil.
So with the red lines that we have up here, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance 2022-13, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Chapter 14.16 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to Water Conservation and Supply Level Regulations. The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Wonderful. We're now going on to current business. This is item number 11, is Resolution Number 2022-33, Seventh Amendment, Seventh Amended and Restated Employment Agreement for the City Clerk. Ms. Brown will be recusing herself from this item, given the potential financial effect on her finances. Ms. Salvini, do you have a staff report? Do we need a staff report? We have, oh, we have to have a staff. That's right. I'm learning.
It'll be brief.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. My name is Barbara Salvini, and I'm the Human Resources Director for the city. State law does require that an oral presentation be provided with regard to the proposed changes to Ms. Brown's employment agreement. And with that, I'm going to hand the mic over to our Human Resources Manager, Marissa Surr, for that oral report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. My name is Marissa Surr, and I'm the Human Resources Manager for the city. I'm going to provide you with a brief summary of the city clerk's proposed agreement that is before you tonight. The terms and conditions of the city clerk's employment are currently outlined in a Sixth Amended and Restated Employment Agreement. The proposed Seventh Amended and Restated Employment Agreement provides for the following: A term of four years, expiring May 24, 2026; a 5% merit adjustment upon the contract effective date; cost of living adjustments tied to those received by executive management employees beginning January 2023 and each January thereafter; city contributions of 2.5% of base salary to the city clerk's 457 account for the first year. After the first year, city-paid 457 contributions will be equal to 1.5% of base salary. And if terminated without cause, the city will provide a maximum of six months of base salary, subject to certain conditions. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Do we have any questions up here? No? We'll now hear public comments on this item. Seeing none, we'll come back here one more time, and do we have a motion?
So moved.
Perfect. Let's vote.
The motion carries 6-0.
Should I wait for Leilani for the motions for reconsideration, or? Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the councilmembers who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none? Perfect. Councilmember Dixon would like to add an adjournment comment.
Yes. This afternoon, while we've been here largely, we've heard the horrible tragic news about 18 children and three adults have been killed in, I think it's Uvalde, Texas. And I just thought that we could adjourn in a moment of silence and sympathy with that city. I just was Googling. They only have like 17,000 in population, so it's a tragedy. So I would just, may I just suggest a moment of silence for a moment? Thank you. Thank you.
Tonight, we're adjourning in the memory of Mary Lou Hergel.
Tonight, we adjourn in the memory of Mary Lou Hergel, a longtime Corona del Mar resident who passed away on May 16th at the age of 76 from complications of cancer. Mary Lou was born in Indianapolis, Indiana, studied business at the University of Indiana. She first visited Newport Beach in the mid-'60s on a spring break trip to visit her sister and fell in love with the city. She moved to Newport Beach in 1966 and settled in the Flower Streets in CDM. Mary Lou enjoyed a long and successful professional career, advancing from sales to becoming a marketing executive for Western Mutual, Escrow, Limeridian Hotel, and the American Red Cross. She was also a member of the Screen Actors Guild and worked more than, on more than a dozen film and TV productions, including The Flintstones Movie, Volcano, Primary Colors, and ER. Mary Lou also enjoyed her volunteer work at the Oasis Senior Center, Newport Beach Public Library, Register of Voters, and the US Census. She was also very involved in the Corona del Mar Residents Association. To quote Mary Lou's son, Christopher, she truly loved the life she led, the friendships she made, and being a member of this beautiful community where she made our home. Mary Lou is survived by her brother, Bill Hergel, her son, Christopher Foster, grandson, C. Jackson Foster, daughter, Kimberly Rivers, granddaughter, Audie Rivers, and multiple nieces, nephews, grandnieces, and great nieces. We adjourn tonight in Mary Lou's honor.
Thank you. And I also did want to mention, the flags are at half-staff for the tragedy in Texas. We are adjourned.